Called the meeting to order of the Shelby City Council Committee of the Whole to discuss the 2021 Shelby appropriations of our budget. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, we'll conduct this meeting as like an open discussion and if, uh, you know, we need to, I'll just jump in and kinda break us off, so.
Hold on your back there.
Okay.
John and I already had those.
Okay, with that, I think we're gonna start with Mr. Ensmann, is that correct?
Uh, the two of us are probably gonna kinda trade off.
Well, I'm gonna hand it over to you guys.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, I'll start it. So, uh, John and I have been, been working, um, together on this, um, and thank you very much, I've said it a thousand times, but for getting stuff so early so we could, we could do this and, um, so today we will be talking about the various street funds and utility funds. Um, just a couple, couple notes, um, before we get into this. A, a lot of the things like the, uh, the audit fees, the gap conversions, the BWC premiums, um, those are, are done, I've, I've calculated all those things out, I can get you guys copies of, of my calculations on those, um, most of them, and the administrative costs as well. Um, I guess I might start by that one first. I know we talked about that last year, because I was sitting here about three days into, uh, the job and, um, but, uh, so administrative costs, we shoot for about five percent of, of a fund's revenues, um, and then we, we determine, it's like, okay, well, you know, like something like income tax, there's no sense in, in charging them five percent and then charging the, you know, the fund that received those income taxes five percent. Um, and also, there's not a lot of administrative costs to the, the income tax fund, like they, they pay their own wages and such, so that one's a little lower, uh, but most of them, I, I did stick around five percent, um, if, if it was something that didn't have that much usage, um, I would pick up a slightly lower percentage, but I can get you all of those, those calculations as, as you like, I've got them all saved on my computer, so, um, but so that's, those, I've done the math on all those, um, and then after that, John and I kinda sat down and we, we kinda predicted based on prior, prior year's numbers and how we think things are gonna change this year. Um, so that's, that's kinda my, my two cents worth before we, we get into things.
A quick question on the admin cost. Is that, you know, that's, that's five percent of, of revenues.
Uh huh.
Does that include the carryover balance? Or just, or just the years?
Just the year's revenue.
Okay, alright.
And I also, uh, that's a good point, I also took out things that I knew were one-time transactions, like if the state is paying for a portion of the, uh, the downtown enhancement or something, you, you know, and they pay it directly, I did not include those in the administrative costs, because other than another entry, it really doesn't affect the financials for that fund, so, um, thank you for, for bringing that up.
Alright, well, I guess we can, let's, you have something to start with, John?
Uh, no, we're gonna look at the taxes and such, I think we need to address the gasoline tax. Of course, that the gasoline tax, uh, was increased last year.
Shall we maybe refer to the number, the column number, just so we might understand.
Yeah, one, 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 two, six.
Yes, okay.
Uh, one, two, six, uh, gasoline tax, maybe 2018 actual, 2019 actual, 2020 actual, you see it coming up, 2019, there was an increase in the gasoline tax, that carried over to 2020, uh, there was a little of a, uh, we're thinking it became a little stagnant within gas tax, early in the season during the, uh, uh, COVID lockdown period as well, uh, so that affected some of the gas tax coming in, which then, of course, affects the 202 and 205 funds slightly, uh, but it, it has recovered, uh, we started the year, 2020, thirty-eight thousand, thirty-nine thousand, uh, January, February, then again, in March, April, it drops down to thirty-five thousand, thirty-four thousand, twenty-seven thousand, thirty-three thousand, then come up, uh, August, it starts ripping back up to thirty-eight thousand, so it's pretty much stagnant right now, so going forward into 2021, the base will truly should stay upstate. So, last year's collection, let's see, I just sent this.
And it's split into 200 and then 7.5 from the 205 fund?
Yeah, I mean, the total collection between the 200 and the 205, four hundred seventy-six thousand, three hundred fifty-four dollars fifty-eight cents, so that's, that's up, big eight thousand for 19 over 2019, so, uh, even, even with the decline in some of the, the gas tax, uh, it's still up considerably, it was, it was lower than our projection, but it was still up about a good eighty thousand dollars, so. So that, that does affect our salt team, uh, the salt purchases and some of the pavement products, but they go, they go, the, the gas tax is, is incorporated into salt and into our street payment, so, I know this is kinda interesting to point out.
I can't, can't really think of too much.
Okay. Uh, well, do you want, I'll, I'll go and get into expenditures.
Let's, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay, uh, let's roll down to expenditures, uh, under the streets, uh, 400, uh, the, throw 400 there, wages, uh, one percent increase by contract, I will point out, there is now thirty-five Sony events and twenty-five water main breaks, so hopefully our, our projections is, uh, $236,000 to cover the year, but again, we, we, there's, there's a lot of Sony events, a lot of Sony events happen on holidays.
Of course.
Yeah, of course.
Well, there would be some fire hiker off when the crews appear.
Right. Not, not today, but, sorry.
John, how many water main bricks did you say?
Twelve, uh, twelve for this year.
Calendar year?
Uh, beginning of the year. So, yeah, thirty, thirty-five Sony events, slash plowin', and, uh, twelve water main bricks, so, so that, that could bump this, uh, this wave, uh, projection around a little bit, uh, but it's gonna be spread between the three funds, you have the three divisions, I guarantee you have the 200, 400, and 500, uh, but I think it's gonna have an impact on all three of those funds, so, we get three holidays, all the holidays, they had crews out, uh, this last big event we just had here a few days ago, the crews around, all those points were out, and it started on a holiday, like four o'clock in the afternoon on a holiday, and it carried over to three o'clock the next day. So, uh, that's, that's one I had to note there, um.
Who's the potential retiree?
Uh, potential retirement, we, and the street department would be Kenny Esterlein, uh, who's projected, uh, they could be May of next year, but there's, could be a potential for this year, but as of right now, it's, it's.
I'm not, no, can I ask too, because he's our one employee that his wages come out of the 205 fund, but I know we're not there yet, but, um, in the past, we paid part of it out of 205 and then his other part of the wages out of 200. I know we talked about briefly the last year, but with the increased, um, gasoline tax, to give a little bit of relief to the 200 fund, have we considered maybe just having him pay completely all the 205 fund? That job position?
Uh, I haven't really heard that talk about now.
It was just something passing through, probably, yeah. Cause we could now, on top of, I think we could now, if we wanted to.
With the additional funds?
What's, what are those full-time equivalents again, sorry, for the street fund?
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, there's fourteen, fourteen, fourteen employees within the, uh, service department, one superintendent, one foreman, five within the division of streets, four within the division of water, and three within division of sewer. I'm sorry, I usually start out with that, I have a number right here.
Um, yeah, and regarding potentially moving him all to the 205 fund, we, we can definitely, the, I guess the nice thing we have here is that we're meeting again, talking about appropriations as a whole, so, um, we can always make some slight adjustments, you know, I can go and run, run some numbers.
Yeah, I'm sure I can.
It, it might make sense to have a little more balance in the 205 fund first, because the gasoline tax is still a little up in the air, so it might be something to switch for next year, but, no, that's a very good point.
Uh, Mr. McLaughlin, uh, just briefly administratively, uh, I don't know if we need to socially distance more or whatever, but I, I rely on reading lips for context and I miss a lot of stuff, and I know other people do as well, so if, if you're speaking, if we could have them remove their masks so we can gather that context, that'd be appreciated, even if you need to spread out a little more on that side of the room, I, I don't care however we need to do it, uh, but, um, I, I'm certainly missing some context, uh, this coming across muffled over here, so.
I think you look better when you're down with the mic. John, you want me to move to edge of the table if possible? Still speaking, uh, my way from Mr. Crum.
Do you have another day?
We have another day, man.
You're not supposed for a TV tray. I'm gonna sit on a TV tray.
I guess the camera's gonna be showing peeking back to people's head.
Well, you can almost just, yeah, set it that way, John, this is easy, and, uh. Well, I'm not gonna work, you said the pizza.
That's right.
And as I appreciate it, please just have the concept that not everybody receives information the same as us. Thank you.
Okay, um, yeah, so the, I guess we'll go with the, the 200, street department, you guys, we talked about wages, uh, potentially increasing, um, all the, the, the PERS, the FICA, the hospitalization, uh, life insurance, tho- those have all been updated based on the, the increase in wages and, and increase in, uh, uh, health insurance costs for the year, uh, so those should be, uh, pretty standard, and that, that'll be standard against, across all of the, um, funds. Um, workers' comp, workers' comp's been an interesting, uh, animal this year, uh, the, the reason that it's, it's lower last year is they actually, um, there was, well, maybe two months where we just didn't have to pay the, uh, workers' comp bill because of COVID, um, they just, that was part of their, their dividend to us, and then they started sending checks later in the year, so that's why last year was 2,400 compared to 3,600 in this fund is, they just didn't bill us as much, um, so I've, I did the true-up report for what it will cost us this year, um, oh, last week, and so that 3,600 should be accurate, the only thing that, it may actually be lower because they've already had talks about reducing their premiums, um, for this year, so it will not be more than 3,600, we, we might save a few bucks in that line item. Um, unemployment, uh, we just kinda left it at a thousand dollars just in case, we don't really have any, um, foreseeing reason to use that, uh, it's just sort of a, a safety net there. Um, natural gas is just based on last year, as those, the, the telephone and just small increases there, um, property insurance and auto insurance, those are calculated based on the premiums for, for this year, um, which was due in, in November with just a slight increase, cause I imagine that they will raise our rates slightly again, um, and that's actually, insurance is something that we can talk about this summer, because we have been approached by several companies that would be interested in, in maybe potentially bidding on it, if, if the mayor and council wanted to pursue that, but we can talk about that after we get through appropriations, um, but anyway, so that's, that's, the insurance costs are calculated based on, um, the actual charges for, for each department, um, from, from last year, you know, if you had more cars, because I know the, the price per car, so we, we use that, and more structures and such, and that's how I calculated those insurance costs. Um, education and meetings is pretty much like last year, that's a pretty standard thing, as is supplies and office supplies, um, state audit is calculated based on last year's amount and the usage per fund. By the way, I, this is only my, my second go-around, is this guy's, how you prefer to do it, just line by line, um, I, you know, I, I did it once last year, but it was a whirlwind of my life, so.
Maybe from our perspective, if there's nothing that's really sticking out, I don't know how the council feels, but just kind of coursing down to them pretty quick, then, but if there's one that's maybe quite a bit different from the year previous, maybe gives an explanation, or if council members have a question, they can come back to the line item, is that all right with council? Cause if we go back laboriously, line by line, we'll be here till five o'clock this evening.
Yeah, yeah.
But we do want to be thorough, but I just, find a balance there.
And I have to point out, the rules have the increases, the majority, if you look, if you look at the comparison of 2020 request to the 2021 request, they're very similar, the, the questions are very tight compared to last year. Uh, there, there are some, uh, slight changes in, in some of the lines, but the majority are, are the same. Let, let me point out, uh, 486 line, uh, maintenance of equipment, uh, as you see, that's, that has increased, uh, between, uh, 2018, 2019 actual, you see, 2020 actual, and we actually increased, uh, uh, this year to $25,000 request, and that is due to the, uh, front-end motor, the, the, the front-end motor is in need of tires and a bucket, um, you know, it's a good, it's an oil machine, and estimate to replace the tires in the bucket is $22,000. So, there's, there's a bucket repair, it's tire replacement, and that's $22,000, okay?
Just for perspective, what would new cost?
A new loader?
Yeah.
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah.
And you can, yeah, you can add, I don't see right there.
John?
Yes, sir.
Your maintenance, uh, for last year, seventeen thousand dollars, what did that cover? I'm thinking of it's $22,000 for one piece of equipment, what, what are you gonna have left to maintain the rest of your fleet?
This, this seventeen thousand dollars helped replace some of the beds on the dump trucks, so it was, it was replacement of, uh, stainless steel beds, uh, salt throwers and such.
Do you, do you have anything now that, that, along those lines that, that needs taken care of? I mean, certainly it's gonna be cheaper to do it sooner than later.
Absolutely. Uh, in, in my conversation with the superintendent, these are the two items that he pointed out for this year, so he, uh, we, we did quite a bit of work to the dump trucks over the last several years, salt spreaders, uh, new miners and such, you know, we feel those, those trucks are in good shape, uh, I, I do know we, we've had some wrecks coming down to replace some parts on, on this, this throwers and such, skip plates on the bottom of the, of plate and all, but he had mentioned this, and this is the two items, the, the bucket and the tires are in, in need of replacement this year, but he didn't mention anything.
I just, I'm just thinking that it would be a whole lot easier to take care of now than to come in, in June or July and say, you know, this, this broke unexpectedly and, and we need more money.
Right, because it only leaves $3,000, and, you know, most parts, when you get into larger, like, it's, it's an expensive project, so, uh, the, the budget's fairly tight, uh, I, I think that it could be movement of $5,000 incrementally through finance if need be, but, uh, we'd always like to have more money in that line, of course, but, uh, the projections right now, hopefully that's recovered, but I do, I do love the thought of looking ahead and see if there's any additional items that would need repair, uh, according to reports, seeing that the two big items are deemed for repair for this year.
Just, just to piggyback, I mean, one thing that we've done exceptionally well is maintenance ahead of things just completely crashing on us and stuff like that, so, you know, I understand numbers crunching and all that kinda stuff, but we can't lose track of what's made us great up to this point, and that's our maintenance program, so if we need to look at skimping somewhere else to provide that maintenance, I, I don't wanna skimp on that maintenance and just kick, can down the road, uh, cause that, those are the kinda things that get cities in big trouble, uh, as, you know, cities to our south even, uh, big troubles.
If, if council would like to increase it to $5,000 to give us a cushion right now, I, I'm, I'm always fine with that.
I, I don't wanna see that change just because of numbers crunching.
This, this fund is, is held enough, we can do.
$2,000 expense coming, to only have a $3,000 cushion.
Which is always unexpected, iris is gonna fail in break, break month.
Yeah, having just a 3,000, but we know, I would like to have some, so I, um, I'll move with unanimous consent, uh, to increase that from 25,000 to 30,000.
Could you excuse me for just one minute, I can just step out here and get a piece of equipment that'll help now.
Okay, uh, $70,000 is requested, if you look at previous years, uh, 2019, 16,000, we were relying on the 210 that year, what was at a lower rate per tonnage, they come in at 39, 79 a ton, which is ODOT, was 55, 96, uh, I just spoke with the superintendent this morning, they have, so what was used today should be replenished, I hope, probably need to consider.
I'll, I'll sponsor that legislation, uh, one thing I do wanna draw our attention to is looking at 2018 actual, uh, if, if we remember, we replenished the year before at a very low rate, which is higher than the low rate we have now, but we, uh, and thank goodness we did, because when it went to, I wanna say, a hundred dollars a ton, um, we forewent purchasing salt that year, uh, because it was so expensive, but we had 1,600 that we had replenished at the lower rate, uh, compared to what we'll be doing this year at the lower rate, so even if we have to bump that up, understand that if for some reason, salt is, you know, 80, 90 dollars a ton, we, we have the ability, um, through our foresight, to be able to go to a situation like 2018, where we're not spending it on that, because.
What's the benefit from the gas tax? That's, that's really helping us out with, with the salt here, uh, by the additional tonnage of salt, and that gas tax is, is really gonna be handy right now. Let's look at 515, uh, you see that, that line item has increased quite a bit, uh, from 18, 19, and 20 actual, $20,000, uh, slight carryover there, reason for that, uh, new mower, it's, it's called a vent track, I don't know if anybody's familiar with, I'm sure Darren's familiar with the vent track, no, she aren't, they do have two for the van track that passes around, it is a mower, shifts as well, it, the, the gears will shift as, if one tire's sliding, the other kicks in, so it'll, it'll, the position is straight as they, they go to the, to the front of the piece of equipment, so, they're around like, MTD mower, they do fantastic, but they're, uh, when you get them on the side of the, of the, um, with, with the, uh, quick thought, quick adjustment to how I get myself on the situation, he's able to maneuver it and scoot down the hill, so. These are the thousand dollar plus, so this, this is, it's saving money, and again, it also gives you the ability, and these kinda cost about $25,000, the bank mowers, you're in at 50 or 10 per tonne in front.
Well, there was no dew on the grass, wasn't it?
My, my mowers are much different than that, Man Alive going to Hills, there is a certain factor that is.
Masonic.
Yes, much.
But that's the, that's the reason for the $20,000 request under the equipment, uh, this is for the vent track, and this can be split between, if council allows, the purchase to take place, it'd be split between the 200, the 300, and the 502 fund, so as we get into those 300 and 502, I was discussing as well, but it, that, that, it'd be split, so the $20,000 isn't just designated for the mower, uh, $10,000 out of the 200 would, would go towards the vent track, uh, the other, the other 15,000 would be split between the other two funds, so we'd have $15,000 left over, and this particular line to cover the other costs, and if you look back at 2,000, last three years, actuals, that should be sufficient.
We have rotary room for our vent track at work and apply, so, they're, you know, they're reversible.
They are, they're, they're nice, they're nice pieces of equipment, we, we concerned, we, we looked at purchasing another one of the, uh, the MTD products, this bed is a great mower, that the crews really like the mower, but this, this is a little more versatile, and it just gives it a little bit more, uh, safety, and you get on the side of things.
Right, most of these line items, uh, street materials are pretty much the, similar to last year, um, street resurfacing, so a little bit, um, the, the next biggest thing, I guess, is the, uh, construction line item, which is, uh, the downtown enhancement, uh, that's paid for by grant, which is up in the revenue line items, um, state grants are maybe 142, matches that construction line item, um, which is line 536, so that'll be an in and out, we don't have to actually spend that money, but that's where we, we parked it.
And if I may, the, the, just go back to the 535 line, street resurfacing, you see it's up, uh, 95,000, that's because of the gas tax, uh, trending upwards, we're utilizing more of the gas tax money to, uh, for resurfacing, and we're gonna utilize the gas tax as best we can, make sure we can pay as many resources as we can, and Alice, just not really put Alice as well. Right, let me, let me hit on, uh, the, the 583 is, is a new line item, it's down towards the bottom there, 583, $10,000 dump truck, it's just a new line, uh, the service department is in need of replacing their one-ton, uh, dump truck, it's a 19, I wanna make sure I get that right for you, I think it's 98, um, it's been a while.
That's the red one?
That is the red one. We have a, what, what's, what's, what we started with the service department, actually all departments, is a succession plan with the large ticket items, your trucks and such, so this year coming up, it, the, it's a 1998 share rate, also would, uh, allow the purchase of the truck, it'd be split bands, uh, this, this truck is shared out between the street department, but it's shared within the water, and it's also shared within the sewer, so all of those funds, the 200, 300, 400, 500, again, we have streets, water, sewer, would help attribute to the cost of the one-time truck, so, uh, but then we are requesting the $10,000 out of the 200 fund to help purchase the cost, we get the total cost is right around the $85,000, that was the estimated cost, it could be a little lower than that, but it's right around the $85,000.
Just the two-wheel drive or four-wheel drive?
Four-wheel drive.
And they'll have quality capabilities?
Quality capability.
Does that price include the quality?
Uh, all, all inclusive, it will, yes, yes.
Hey, um, yeah, I think the other line item there is the gap conversion, which is just standard, not too shabby.
For lunch and, or work through lunch?
The pizza will not get any warmer.
Let's, I'll go ahead and break for 10 or 15 minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Camera's still a little warm.
Just shut. Just either sanitize your hands or, hang on a second, let me get a sanitizer right here.
Look at that.
Good job, good man.
First time in my entire life, and I'm gonna send a thank you, when their pizza's gone, ain't our calories in there.
It'll, it'll make that line longer, it's worth it.
Yes, if it makes you feel any better, I'd rather have the A.
I see the wall there, watch your point for this.
That's right. New week, oh, I just want to eat for three more days. And it was.
I almost had that.
I'll get it right there, and Chris, eat all of them, that's right.
Well, you're selling it, right? You gotta sell it somewhere, I'm, I'm gonna see you demo that, dude.
Their, their, ours, you know, we've got three zero on hers, no, not making it uphill. There, there's, there are two guys who are a little hesitant.
Wait till the doos off the grass.
Yeah, well, I won't, I won't mow around the banks, those, those ponds out there are just wet.
Consider how much we've clocked this in an hour, and you've got a vehicle, and you're like, say. I've heard, you know, it's not just twenty-five thousand. Well, what's the light panel?
No, it's, it's, it's.
Why don't you get a hundred people five hours?
I have five acres.
Well, they didn't get a lot of jobs, alright?
Now this actually doesn't affect so well.
Oh, yeah.
Other people have views, as it goes.
Beer, beer wasn't. There are just a very few sways. John, is Josh left here, or is he still on vacation?
Where's our?
I can't believe my back doesn't.
If we're flying commercial, uh, well, it's charter.
He's going to have first class.
He's got a second coat of style.
Do you know what kind you got, a Merbera, Pfizer?
Eagle, we're gonna, like, are they gonna switch it back more to play with the Duran Pfizer now, is that what?
Well, you know, we'll have at least another five hundred of the Pizers, uh, I don't really, I think this came as a result of the teachers, primarily the work, work we're using, anything above beyond, general public, so. I really don't know, I think we'll get another five hundred. But we do have some evidence in, in the figure now.
I think I heard that Ohio is administered for like the fifth most vaccines so far, which is impressive. There are several states much larger than us. What number of people, right? Population? I'm not one hundred percent positive of it.
I'm gonna drink a Mountain Dew.
Seven. I am.
This is curious. I used to, I used to drink it all the time, I just lost my taste there.
I think they've changed it.
I can't take part in that team this month.
You guys.
You know, you come in, hey, where are you wearing some more?
Dude, there's Stephen Aron wants you to dress like that.
Well, at this point, I can get them.
You didn't get the memo on the blue sweater in there? I think it's a blue, it's a, maybe it's orange.
Something's going on my house, Joe. There has a few day work, my wife doesn't, no, that time doesn't go with that. How many people you think are out there on the internet, all watching you lunch?
That's true.
Steve Lightner. Brian, Steve Lightner, Steve keeps me on my toes, he reminds me of everything. One. Brian, Steve, Steve, good to see you today, you're welcome to come in.
The school's got one there, right? The school's been open down there?
Yes, they did. They weren't even on a delay today.
What time you be up there?
I was up before, and, but it didn't start snowing until three thirty, really good snow, you know, it wasn't. So, didn't have to, I haven't put the cloud down yet, I assume that the guys will be soon.
Good evening. Eagles traded Wentz to Colts.
What's that?
Eagles traded Wentz, uh, Wentz to the Colts for a third-round draft pick.
Well, his contract's still high.
Yeah.
They weren't gonna get anything out of him.
That's incredible.
I'm surprised they did it.
And a conditional twenty-two, second rounder.
Look, the, they still take a cap hit. I think their cap hit's gonna be around twenty million, still, even trading. And the salary cap's dropping because of COVID.
There's gonna go in.
The third march.
Sean Watson doesn't have a home yet, does he?
I don't know. I'm hoping Watt goes to the Browns.
Watt is gonna go to the Packers.
You think so?
I just had a story that said it's up to Baker Mayfield, talk him into it. Maybe I can do a commercial with him.
You guys have the cap space one, though.
Oh, yeah.
Is this the mower, I tell you? So we're, so we're thinking there. Next year, right? Oh, wait, there's.
Why not?
There's always next year, right, Jeff?
Why not?
It's Cleveland's. Northern Ohio's.
The mantra?
Yeah.
Your place, didn't really.
Want some of ours?
No.
Disgusting.
I don't know, Sean. Having none, we're gonna hell be, hell be all of you. Do what? We're gonna hell be all of us, haven't you done? I can always peel them off.
Show that sensor light switch in the, uh, back room, back, that door, it's, it's really weirding me out. This brand, they whip on and off now.
Indy isn't a bad place for them, though.
What's that?
Indy's not a bad place for wimps. Playing in the dome, you know?
Yeah.
You're gonna be playing against, uh, depleted Texans. So Titans are gonna be only really challenging that division.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I just try to stay away from, I'm a bottle. Sitting there.
And look, all type of stuff, but real Texas, you're solo, you're not connected to the game.
Well, sort of, there's the Panhandle and El Paso.
Right.
They're separate.
And it's fast, rude, Texas is, I don't know. Can I read the city right now? They're more, get it connected.
Why, it's the whole entire region, it's not just Texas.
That's in New Mexico, whatever, you have these, because.
Yeah. And they're all in rolling blackouts, Oklahoma, all the way up. Kansas has the worst of it. So Kansas has a, friends in Kansas City. And they pay, you think our electric rates are bad, they pay on a, a rolling basis to the customer. So right now, they're, uh, they're, they have an app a way that you can look at it, I think they're, he said it was two hundred and twenty dollars right now.
I'll make more.
So imagine us having to pay that. We complained about our ant contract. It was, yeah, there's issues all up and down.
Can we send some police down to help out, make some money on the deal? No money, ten thousand dollars an hour, right?
The problem, though, is not really infrastructure, it's generation. Cause they put their, their natural gas plants and their coal plants in maintenance in the wintertime, and they don't need as much, because they wanna prepare for the summer season. But then the windmills froze, so then they had to bring things online, and because they, the pipes weren't treated, the pipes froze. It's, I mean, it's a once in a, once in a century thing, right? So I guarantee you, their maintenance on their windmills are gonna purchase the, uh, industrial frozen lubricant, because the North Dakota windmills, they're still going.
You get that generator and the, uh, fire it back up, and send that down to, it's a good time to sell it.
You made a deal.
Well, we're not using any one?
That's good, we'll forget it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about that later today.
We'll, we'll, we'll sell that to them, screw up the demo.
It's gathering dust.
Now, we're gonna get started here shortly, if anybody wants to come over again in the last minutes. All right, Brian, dip play. All right. Okay. All right. Okay, we're good. Okay, everybody ready to get going? Any objections? All right, we're back in session.
Okay, I believe we're two oh five fund here. Not a whole lot, uh, going on with this, the gasoline taxes, we're projecting similar to twenty twenty, as, as we were, uh, we talked with the regulatory fund and everything. Um, talked about the one employee's, a portion of wages come out of this fund. So that's really about it for it. John, do you have any thoughts on the two oh five, or?
Uh, no, sir.
No one has any, any else, cause that's all pretty much standard. Uh, that moves us on to the two-ten fund. Um, this one is funded by, uh, county sales tax. We have rejected it at eighty thousand, uh, for, for revenue, uh, we brought in eighty zero sixty-six last year. I like to think with the, with the way, um, homes are, home values are going up, that probably we'll see more revenue than that, um, in twenty twenty-one, as a conservative estimate, uh, the, uh, two-hundred-and-ten.
That, that's a, a tax, um, that's gonna be the same, they told me.
Okay, sales tax, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you, Amber. Okay, well, that would be the saying, that's, that's good to hear.
Yep.
John, you wanna talk about the salt anymore?
Uh, absolutely, yeah, uh, line four ninety-nine, uh, some of the operational expenditures that come out of two-ten would be salt, uh, thirty thousand dollars. It's going to the salt, getting the seventy thousand, and two-hundred and thirty thousand, and it's giving us that hundred thousand dollars for the salty. And I will prepare the legislation to purchase the salt from, uh, the county. Uh, rolling down from there, excuse me, uh, five thirty-four, street materials that's used for the Durham hatchet, uh, and other materials that's needed for the streets. Uh, five thirty-five, street resurfacing, uh, pretty thirty-five thousand dollars, uh, for additional street resurfacing. Again, we're gonna be trying to do some of these smaller roads and some alleys included in, with the two-ten. Two-ten, uh, alleys or streets need to abut to a state highway. So anything that's used on the two-ten, you need to have that street, alley size need to be connected to a state highway.
You have any questions on that fund?
Not on the fund, but we had had a study, uh, that put all the streets in, in priority, and that's been about three years ago, I think. Uh, could, could we get an updated version of that?
As in, have the gentleman make it down?
Well, I don't, what, you know.
Where we're at.
Yeah, where we're at.
Check off, you know, what streets are done, and put those at the bottom of the list, and.
It's pretty close to right where, where it was.
You have, you have a list here, there, you have a job, you said, huh?
How many pages is that?
They're weird. It's just one, we have them all listed down the side, and then what year we planned on doing things.
Okay, all right.
You have the, you have the complete list, or just the list I'm pulling up and working off of?
No, I like the whole list, the whole town.
Is that, that, that's.
Oh, the whole list, okay.
Yeah, it's the big ones.
And then you want our, okay.
And then maybe a follow-up, with the, like you're saying, like the five-year plan we had, that's stuck off of that list, would be good to have.
Well, if any of us get a call and say, why is this street, and I've got poples in mind, we can say, well, you know, here's, you know, it's not arbitrary. You know, it's, it's very methodical. That may make, not make anyone happier, but it's justification.
We'll get all the information again.
Okay, um, I guess the next fund would be the two fifty-two fund. Uh, a real quick aside, uh, while we're not talking about the capital permit fund, the three-hundred fund today, um, so you guys know, when we do talk about that, a portion of the vent track mower, um, I think five thousand dollars, and, um, a thirty thousand dollar portion of the dump truck, um, is projected to be as part of that fund. So there may be a possibility that if, if that fund doesn't, doesn't work for that, um, we may have to talk about adjusting some of the other appropriations funds in the utility department, the industry department for that, so, just you guys.
I, I have some, uh, other information I could, I could, uh, contribute, uh, discuss with that segue there. Uh, with the three hundred, I know it's not in front of you today, but I, I have pulled up here, as, as, uh, Mr. Curren was mentioning, uh, with those items you just mentioned, the GIS system that we're currently, uh, updating, we're taking all the data points for the water, wastewater, the stormwater system, uh, that's to be completed this year, that was seventy, seventy, I can't remember, seventy-seven thousand, five hundred dollars, seven, I think it was seventy thousand, five hundred dollars. But twenty-four thousand of that, uh, per resolution fifty-five two thousand nineteen is to come out of the three hundred fund this year. So three hundred miscellaneous, twenty-four thousand dollars for the GIS. Then when you get into your general fund discussion, uh, and five thousand dollars of the vent track, again, was coming out of the two hundred, three hundred, and five, five oh two fund. Uh, in addition to that, uh, in the three hundred, it'd be twenty-five hundred dollars for the Witty Avenue Bridge, it goes over the CSX tracks. Uh, we're looking to spray, or have, not us, but have a contract about to spray shotcrete or gunite alongside the embankments. Those walls are in dire need of some form of, of, uh, attention to it, there's a lot of concrete is falling, chipping falling, it is, it looks like. There's a lot of concrete is falling, chipping falling, it looks like a lump of mess down there. So we're, we're, the company that was here last year that did the concrete, well, the resurfacing work on top and the ceiling. We discussed this with it and they were able to come in and shopcrete or quickcrete, uh, gunite, it's just to spray the concrete as well over the surface of what's falling down there. So that's, that's also in this fund. And, and with the one ton plowed, uh, truck as well, that, that's also in the two hundred. So, you know, one, one ton truck, dump truck has come out of two hundred, three hundred, four hundred, five hundred, five hundred two.
Thank you. So, yeah, just so you guys know, that, that'll be on the agenda next time. Um, the three fifty two fund, our sidewalk fund, uh, not a whole lot here. I will talk about the transfers from the city income tax, cause this goes in play with a lot of different things. I am projecting a three percent decrease in, in our overall in, income tax, um, collection this year. How I'm, how my logic is on that, you know, it's, it's very, very hard to tell, as we've discussed many times. I think that withholding is going to be similar to twenty twenty. Uh, you know, as, as we saw, the January financials withholding was actually up from twenty twenty. Uh, which gave me some light at the head, at the end of the tunnel. I'm guessing that we'll have a ten percent reduction in business and income tax, and individual income tax returns this year. My, my logic to that is, is, you know, while businesses were closed down, a lot of them got PPP money or the IDL money. Those are not taxable. And so even though our businesses are okay, our, our tax revenue will go down, probably a lot of them will show losses. The individuals, if they don't want unemployment, uh, that is not taxable to the city. So we'll lose out on, on some tax revenue there. So that's, that's kind of my logic is right now. I will know a little more after we get through the, the February, um, financials, which we'll try to do very quickly so that hopefully we have them for our, our next meeting, which will probably be early March, we haven't really discussed it. And so that, that might change that logic a little bit. But for, for now, that's, that's what I'm, I'm projecting. And so that's why I've got thirteen thousand five hundred in the transfer from income tax this year compared to the, almost, oh, thirteen thousand nine hundred that we had last year. So that's, that's my logic there. Expenditure for the sidewalk fund, obviously there's very little other than actual construction costs, um, which we're allocating twenty four thousand dollars again. Used most of last year.
What is that called? Cause last year was curbs and ramps, right? Uh, so we're, we're not doing more curbs and ramps this year.
We will, the paving project will have that in there.
It will.
If I can mention, you know, customer, or you mentioned sidewalks, uh, technology, parkway, there was discussion about that in the meetings. Mr. Guy's research, I believe it's, it's the construction sidewalks, is the homeowner responsible out here when they construct a home?
Correct.
So you guys cover it later, we did some research into that and we found out that when a new road is constructed, that homeowner has a responsibility of having that sidewalk paid for accordingly.
I know we asked for, I'm using the royal league, cause I asked for it, if you have counsel. A plan for upgrading sidewalks. I know we go ward by ward to send out the letters that you need to finish your sidewalks and all that stuff. But in dealing with this money, uh, we had talked about, similar to what we did with the streets, prioritizing areas that need to be done for greater public safety. Uh, even if we need to chip in and help the homeowner or do it and then charge the homeowner or whatever. More so than we've been doing in other areas. Along with that was a discussion, along with the technology part, it wasn't just that discussion, it was also other roads that are adjacent to that that have been exempted from having to put sidewalks in. So, uh, I guess the question is, where are we on a prioritization list? And then also, it would be nice to know what sidewalks are exempted. And, and whether we wanna address that as a council moving forward. Cause some of those exempted sidewalks are in areas where there's a lot of walkers and kids walking to buses and stuff like that.
I don't know of any place that's been exempted from having sidewalks.
I think most of the streets between Parkwood and Glenwood, well, I've been told that there was a, a deal with the city when those were constructed in the sixties.
That's correct.
No, no, there's no such deal. They just weren't put in.
Okay? That, that was.
I mean, if there's a deal, show me the, show me the paperwork.
Cause that's, when we were looking at technology, we were obviously looking at Cleveland and Parkwood off of that because it's a similar area and I was told that there was an exemption for those.
I know now in our subdivision regulations, it's mandatory to put sidewalks in there, but there's a caveat that says that the planning commission can waive that. No, I was born in seventy, so I have no idea what would happen back then. But we could actually look at the plat that was dedicated and approved or the, if we could even try to find the, the subdivision documents, which would be very hard at this point, and see what sidewalks were on there or not. Or a ray may have some better history.
If it isn't documented, it doesn't exist, so.
But exemption, I guess, is a porous word, but I think the planning committee, that's how this, cause obviously I'm like, why are all these houses, they, you know, and we're not talking about like every other or something like that, there's nothing through there sidewalk wise. Why is that?
Well, I, granted, at that time, the planning commission, it, you know, said to the developer, you do not have to put in sidewalks. But that was not a permanent, you know, that was meant for that time when those streets were being constructed. And as, as Charlie said, if it's not in writing, it doesn't exist. You know, the, the legend or the, uh, you know, someone's vague recollection from forty, fifty years ago doesn't count. In a perfect world, as soon as you hit the city limits, you would see curb and gutter and sidewalks throughout the entire town. I can take you to a place, I can take you to a village, Jackson Center over in west central Ohio. And it impressed me when, when my wife and I were on vacation, we got to the, the village limits, boom. Curbs, gutters, sidewalks, and you got them until you got to the other side of town and you drove out. Now that comes with a price, granted. But I think I can look at all the five council members and, and know that, you know, we have sidewalks in front of our house. Someone paid for them somewhere along the line. You know, and I know, and, cause I was in that position, it's, it's, it's very awkward for the mayor to get up and say, you know, hey, the law requires you to pile, shovel your sidewalks, when knowing that in this particular case, the mayor, the finance director, and the law director don't have sidewalks in front of their houses.
So anyways, I think we need to look back. And even if we need to have, um, I'm not, so obviously, the, we have the sidewalk fund for that purpose, to help out. And typically we've helped out on a financial needs basis. But again, one thing I talked about, well, I talk about this every year we go over this one. Not just a financial need basis, but a city needs basis. Cause obviously it, there are certain, granted, that'd be nice if we all had curbs and gutters, we, we are curbs, we, we get that, okay. But there are certain areas of town, especially when you have kids walking to school. And we talk about every time, shovel your sidewalks because the kids walking to school and to the bus and all that stuff. Well, there are whole areas of town where there's no other, there's no option. There's nothing to shovel, all right? And we know those areas. So not just having a needs base, but having a location base to where we prioritize and start chipping away at this issue. Cause it is an issue, it's an issue in my, it's, it's an issue that crosses everybody's ward. I think that we assume it's only certain wards that are affected by this. And that's just simply not the case, it's something that affects every single ward. So even if we need to say, even if we need to come up with a comprehensive plan, dedicate some monies to help out with it, cause I understand, trust me, I understand sidewalks are not cheap. I'm having to, I'm having some serious issues in my sidewalk. Full disclosure, out, out in front, where I know the next time we get to the fourth ward, I'm gonna get a memo or a, a letter. Cause I had it for one section, just to fix that one section, three hundred bucks, okay? So I understand that it's not, I don't think that's mine. Uh, I understand that it's not, uh, it's not cheap, I get that. But it is something we need to look at and even if we put, you know, one year, you can have it as a, we, we look at it as a, at least a partial income tax credit. That you put in sidewalks this year, you get a partial credit on your city income taxes, uh, to accommodate for that. You know, whatever we need to do to make sure it gets done, um, aside from, it's, it's the law, it needs to be done, you have to do it. I understand that is an option. But there's, we're not talking about a Wednesday, Tuesday situation. We are talking about a widespread issue. And it's going to, um, the reason it hasn't been done up to this point, let's be perfectly honest, is because it has become a political issue and a political third rail that nobody on council has wanted to jump in and touch full bore.
Well, I appreciate, uh, Mr. Worth's comments, however, I think that's, that's a discussion maybe better held in his committee and not in appropriations committee. That's what we came here to do, is discuss appropriations.
Agreed.
Not how to deal with a sidewalk issue.
Agreed, we'll move on.
Okay.
Agreed, we'll move on. Mr. Martin.
Uh, all right, the next fund is the three fifty three streets, alleys, and catch basin fund. That is also funded by income tax, uh, which I'm allocating four hundred thirty six thousand this year, um, for the time being. It had about a hundred ninety six thousand in budget, so we got six hundred and thirty thousand to work with. Nothing too surprising here. John, you wanna talk about this fund, cause it really is all just the paving project?
Yes, um, let's, let's go back to two forty, we'll look at the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty actuals. The levy was kinda designed to bring in right around four hundred fifty thousand dollars, we're, we're still hovering there. But again, as, as the finance director, I mean, to, projections seem to be, could be projected to be lower this year. But it's not gonna affect the paving project this year, we are so good and forward with four hundred fifty thousand dollars worth of street resurfacing. You'll find it in, uh, line five thirty five. That's the projected number, uh, bid price, we're hoping if we can get the, the, uh, bid specifications over to council at, at the March first council meeting, get this out to bid as quickly as we can. Hopefully we can get some good pricing going forward, uh, hopefully the asphalt prices will stay down as we did last year. Is everybody familiar with the areas which we're gonna be paving this year, ready to review of the, what we call the Beechwood area?
Who here is old enough to know what Beechwood is, right?
Not me, sorry, guys.
We still have the Beechwood Hitching Post and such stuff, yes.
Irish Town.
That was before me. I don't know. Simeon Drive, Carlton Drive, Sherman Drive, uh, Park Avenue from Tucker to Sherman, Mac Avenue from Tucker to the end. High School Avenue and Mac Avenue, I believe Mr. Guy's High School Avenue has been shortened up to the bridge.
Well, right where it meets Park Avenue there.
Yeah, right there, yes. So that, that's, that's the, what we consider most as the Beechwood area, what we consider, but that is, that is the street paving project for this year. If, if we have additional funds left over within the three fifty three, we will, we will, like, certainly go out and see if there's some other smaller roads that we can get paid, uh, along with the two hundred fund and the two ten fund. So, uh, we will maximize the expenditure as far as we can go. Paving is, is highly important in this town and we wanna make sure that the streets and some of the alleys are taken care of, so.
Does that, does your estimate on High School Avenue and Mac Avenue there, is that kind of a clue that old, doing something with that old railroad trolley car bed there that's causing the, is that gonna be an issue or is that?
That is part of the paving project, from the bridge going.
Well, my question is, are you making allowance for that, cause that's obviously gonna cost a little bit more money than, uh, just milling it.
We did core samples in that area and there's actually bricks underneath the, underneath the asphalt. I think that's causing more of the issue than the old rail bed. I think that's been years, over the years been taken care of, bit by bit.
Where exactly is that?
Right at the bend there on, where High School Avenue makes the bend that goes up towards the police station.
Didn't think we were gonna find concrete over there.
Okay, um, does anybody have any more questions about the three fifty three fund or should we move on?
Let me roll.
All right, hey, there we go, we're through the street part of this, uh, discussion. All right, four hundred, the sewer fund. I will tell you guys that this was the fund that is a little close, um, or a lot close. I think if we have projected, if everything goes as planned, we would have eight hundred and thirty seven dollars left in this fund at the end of the year. So, uh, we, we may need to adjust this one a little bit, but John and I wanted to get it to you how it is and, um, see how things go. And John, I guess, collections, you know, what's, obviously we didn't do very well last year with, with collection. We had one point, one four three down, where we were hoping for one point two four. And we had a one point two four again this year. Can you explain, I'll, I'll back up.
Absolutely, collections in the sewer are down, uh, a couple reasons. One, uh, sewer is based off of water consumption. Water consumption was down for the year twelve percent. So if you look at the water pursuit between nineteen and two thousand twenty, uh, we had, we had a twelve point two four percent reduction. And the majority of that is focused on the top fifty customers. So we're looking at the commercial and the industrial customers, we're looking at the top fifty customers. We had, we had, there was a nine million cubic foot difference between, uh, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. And we're focused on COVID, it's, it's COVID related factories. Majority was open, but there, there was a lot of reductions in there. Uh, you can even look to the restaurants, restaurants, uh, diet, inside dining was, was eliminated. So those who usually go in, uh, use the facility, those consumptions are down. So it's, it's really focusing on the top fifty customers that we have quite a bit of reduction. Sewer is based off of water, the water was down, so sewer is gonna be down naturally. And additionally to that, the leach aid, uh, if you receive, if you look at, uh, line one six three, one six three, you see miscellaneous pumping, that is leaching. Leach aid is a byproduct, uh, that happens at a, at a landfill. So you have, you have a pile of, of, of landfills sitting there, you have snowmelt, rainfall, that percolates through the waste. It goes down to a collection system, there, there, there is a membrane that doesn't allow that to further itself to the ground. And there's perforated pipes, that collects the, 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 the leach aid, the wastewater that's going through that is collected. And we have an agreement with Brumke, where we have overland film, to bring their leach aid over. We ceased that during the construction phase of. Uh, we ceased that during the construction phase of the plant. Uh, we got ourselves in a situation where they brought over the numerous amount of, of leaching during the construction phase when it was the worst possible time ever. Clarifiers down, digesters down, and they inundated us with the product. It caused the plant upset, we had some issues in the river. We ceased it until the beginning, until we had the construction phase taken care of. And when, when the plant went back into a hundred percent of operation, we were slowly phasing the leach aid back in. So we used to bring in four plus loads a day of leach aid. Uh, delivery points from Park Drive and off of, uh, Park Drive on the progress drive. Uh, we reduced that down to two. Uh, so you, you'll notice in your one six three line, uh, two thousand eighteen, we're growing in almost eighty-nine thousand dollars. Two thousand eighteen, during that major construction phase, we had thirty-five dollars, actually we had almost thirty-five dollars. Uh, and last year, the actual was twenty-four thousand sixty-three dollars and three cents, so we're slowly bringing this back. So this year, projection, we're, we're, we might go bring some more in, we're still focusing on those two loads. Uh, so two loads of leach aid coming in. Uh, possibly the third, the, the plant's accepting it while we want to make sure that the plant was able to accumulate itself to this foreign product. So the bugs don't like surprises, so you've got to ease, ease the new product into it and the bugs start accepting it, so they, they, they start working with it and it flows on through just fine. So you'll see the miscellaneous pumping was down considerably, uh, from the years past, so that's number two. So water consumption was down, leach aid was down. Uh, the nice thing about the next one here on, on line one sixty-three, the septic collection, so we are bringing in septic now, uh, and that brought in almost twenty thousand dollars. So we're hoping, that's, that, that never should increase, uh, by thirty some percent next year, so. Uh, we have thirty thousand dollars projected, I, I think it's to be higher than that. So Shelby is really being looked at as a nice delivery point for septic receiving. So that's, that's, that's a, that's a nice plus right there.
Oh, what an honor.
It's, it's.
Spray that product!
I want your revenue.
Oh, that stinks.
Bring your group to show.
Move it on, move it on.
Sorry.
We get a plaque.
One, one real good positive is if you take a look at the top right hand side of your spreadsheet, I think you all should have an honor to do, believe, I think you all should highlight there an orange.
It was on the Excel file, it's probably not the one in the binder.
Okay, uh, in one fifty-three, uh, there's no one there collecting from Tubi late two thousand twenty-one. What that is over the last several years, after many, of many, of many meetings, conversations, engineering design, Archibald to be, uh, has been going through the process, that's working through the EPA, looking through variances, and trying to figure out what's the best solution for their outfall. Because we send them city water, they pro, use that city water for processing in the plant. They have your own wastewater treatment facility and their wastewater treatment facility will discharge out, uh, outfalls zero zero five to the Tubi Run. Tubi Run, uh, has been tested and the macroorganisms are not thriving. So the outfall from two, from, uh, Archibald to the Tubi Run at the end, the beginning of two thousand twenty-two is no longer, they are no longer discharged to the Tubi Run and unless it's a big emergency. So their two hundred and fifty thousand gallons of water that we send them daily, uh, unless their operations change, that's on average, two hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day. That water will be processed at their facility and discharged to our, uh, sanitary sewer. So additional revenue will be coming our way, so. So the, the Tubi Run as you know it, uh, the stream that looks thriving is just thriving, but macroorg, organisms are not. The two hundred and fifty thousand gallons that was, uh, under aquatic life to thrive is, soon happens here, but anyways, uh, take the story. That two hundred and fifty thousand gallons will be coming our way for additional revenue. So there's been a lot of discussion, a, a lot of meetings. Uh, engineering is still taking place and you'll see one of the expenditures here soon in four oh two, where we, as Shelby, as we, with the, the negotiations with us, we will purchase a partial fluid meter. It, it's a meter that, that's designed for sanitary fluids wastewater. And it goes through, it looks like a, so it starts out, it trinks it down, the water builds, goes to a meter, it comes back out. So, uh, our engineering is working through this right now with, with, with the Archibald engineering. That's our cost, they're going to be shipping their wastewater to Shelby. Starting probably October this year, we're going to phase it in. Uh, a slow phase in, because we want to make sure the, the plant will accept, uh, this product of it. Just kind of let the bugs get accumulated to it. If the testing's already been done, there's nothing that's going to shit upset this plant. We've been through the engineering, they've, they've researched it, everything looks very positive, where that waste will not have any impact to the plant. But we still want to just phase it in gradually. So revenues will come up, so we need to get through this year. Uh, I know as reported at, at council, you know, collections were down again. Water consumption was down, leach aid was down. Uh, hopefully the leach aid is going to come back up, septic is going to come back up. And going late this year into next year, collections will be up substantially. From, from two hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day from Archibald this year, so.
Is there an estimate on what that might be monthly or?
Uh, I don't know the month, but I think it's estimated close to a couple hundred thousand dollars a year in revenue.
John, how many bugs are going to be dealing with this?
How many bugs?
How many bugs?
Millions of bugs.
Nothing else too special with the revenue side of things. Um, we don't really have anything for capital projects, uh, budgeted this year. Um, capital projects for the office, uh, there's some stuff that's, once again, being split between all the funds. You want to bring that up, John, now?
Sure, yeah, uh, since we have four hundred CPO, uh, four CPOs of capital projects here at the utilities office. Uh, the major driver here with expenses would be under five thirty, like five thirty, office equipment and furniture expenses. We actually budgeted for this last year. Uh, COVID come in and we kind of kept the, the office isolated along with other, uh, contractors. They, they, they kind of shut down themselves, other than doing some of the engineering aspects of it. This would be for a billing software update. Uh, the, the last update, the billing software is over fifteen years old. Uh, that's, it's not going to be supported in two thousand twenty-two. So we're, we're looking at, you know, this year, twenty-one being last year to be supported, going into twenty-two will be supported. Uh, updated is, is, uh, in hand. It's, uh, total's right around sixty-six thousand dollars for the upgrade. And Mr. Carl was telling me that's not that bad a price for.
No, I've seen worse. I've seen a lot worse.
No, and that made me feel better, but. So that, that's the one big expense there with, with the capital projects at the office. And we do have a small roof leak we need to fix and, and crack seal and do with the landscape, I want to do out front. Uh, but that's, that's under the, uh, five oh seven, uh, maintenance buildings. Between the three funds, I'll go against it from there. Uh, and we do have, no, I'm not sure, go ahead, Mr. Carl, I'm, I'm, I'm in the four hundred DCP because I rolled down.
That's, that's kind of where I'm at too, unless anybody has any questions about the CPO. Um, and really, I guess, most of the DCP is, is probably things you'd want to talk about anyway, yeah?
Yeah, actually, the DCP, uh, four hundred DCP, if we roll down to line five one fifteen, the five fifteen line, uh, will be in our last year for water meter purchase. So, uh, it could be a few of the triple in next year, but I think we might want to manage that with just, just our real leader line item. But this, uh, hopefully is our last year. Uh, we're looking to purchase, uh, twenty-five thousand dollar worth of meters out of this particular fund. There's four funds for the meters. Uh, four hundred, four oh two, five hundred, five oh two. So four funds that we utilize to purchase the meters. Sewer fund, of course, the water, water in sewer out, so that's the reason why, uh, sewer pays for some meters as well. Uh, we budgeted for thirty-five thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars in that will be for meters. This one, I, I put a note to myself here, you see G I S in here, we did not designate this particular line to support the G I S. G I S is under the three hundred, four oh two, and the five oh two. Rolling down for merit, a brand new line item of five eighty-three, ten thousand dollars for the dump truck. Again, this is going to replace the, the dump truck, the one ton dump truck out of the service department. And it's going to be utilizing funds two hundred, three hundred, four hundred, and five hundred for that, and five oh two. If council approves that. Any questions there?
Weird, the, the old dump truck, would there be any reason for us to keep it for any odd jobs or are we just going to kind of flip it out the pasture?
Oh.
I don't know, it's been.
It hasn't been, you know, look at, look at the value of it, you see, it's still operational, um.
I'm just curious.
It's, yeah, we have, there's a lot of thought, but normally we either traded it or we're trying to sell it.
Got you, very.
And is it be another expense for us if we maintain it and you have to put plenty into it for?
Yeah, yeah, we need to add a new one.
The legislation to purchase the new, it's always easy to put in, you know, another section, such, such a, you know, vehicle VIN number is, you know, something traded in or disposed or whatever.
You could have gotten a nice one about this.
I believe so.
Mercy.
Uh, and you know what, I think I owe council the employee staffing within the, within the sewer wastewater treatment plant five. So that includes, that is total five, that is super ten.
Nothing, nothing too much there, moving on to the distribution, um, section. You know, all of the evil resources stuff, that's all just, uh, increased, uh, based on our normal increases in costs, um, as well as natural gas and telephone and propane and all that, that stuff. That's all pretty standard, um, supplies are about what they were, maintenance on vehicles. Um, nothing really too surprising there.
If, if I may, the only thing that could be exceptionally tight would be the wages. If you look at the actual wages listed, if you look back to two thousand twenty, again, with the overtime that we've incurred, uh, about this year for salting and, and alarmings, that could be exceptionally tight.
Yeah, yeah, if there was one line to increase on, on here, it would be that.
I've already had to pay out pump time this year out of the, the service department, which four hundred G I S is part of the service department. Um, because there are a lot of people that can like so much pump time, you have two hundred hours and they have to take pay, so.
It's al, it's already starting.
Yeah, it's already starting.
So, yeah, so that, that probably is, is a little low. Um, and obviously if we increase that lineup, we can decrease something else. Um, the, I don't know if we can reduce the maintenance equipment in this fund, any John? Um.
I would refrain from that.
Yes. So that, that's just going to be something that, that we're going to have to be real careful on, um, this, this year. Um, unless anybody else has any suggestions with that, we can come back to that line item after we look at the other expenses, uh, in the fund. Um, manufacturing, uh, sort of the, the same deal. Um, we have a potential retirement in manufacturing.
There is a potential for that, correct. That, I've discussed it with the employees, so I'm, I'm not hundred percent sure if it could fall this year or begin of next year. Or maybe it might stay around, let it roll, it's, it's Alberto's cap. I'm not sure.
Yeah, anyone else in, in, for retirement, we've got to have them put in here whether they're going to or not, like we always do.
Makes sense.
So I'm not sure what the payout would be for his retirement, but there is a potential for him to retire.
Haven't forgotten that information. Because she's on top of everything. Let's see here. I have to flip the page, there we go. Uh, we'd be looking at about fourteen thousand dollars. So that, that could make that lineup a little, a little tight as well if that happens. Um, but I'm okay taking the gamble for the time being. Um, also in, in, in the manufacturing section, uh, electric, John, what's, why, why was that down?
This is what I love to talk about. Uh, four twenty-six line, if you look at two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen actual, two thousand twenty actual, you see the trend coming down. Uh, that is due to the upgrade of, of the new treatment plant and it runs absolutely a hundred percent efficiently, it's just incredible. The, the efficiency of the, of the motors, controllers, lighting is, is reflecting on the operation. The, the hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars that was spent in two thousand twenty, that, that was one full year of operation for the plant. So I, 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 I don't really don't see it's going too much farther than that right now, the operation stays the same. Uh, we, we should stay very, very close to that. So we, we budgeted a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars just to get a little bit of cushion, but the plant is running very efficient. As, as expected. Going, going into that project, there was one thing I stressed, that, that the plant had to run more efficient than it was, than it was currently running. Uh, and the engineering firm did exceptionally, it's exceptional job with that, so. The, the equipment, the lighting, controls, everything is running very, very efficient, so. It makes a difference.
To, to the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Which is not what you call an option, so.
No, it's very impressive.
So I guess, you know, if, if we really got a pinch or we wanted to reduce that electric, uh, we, we could potentially do that a little bit. Um, what else do we have in this section? I don't, you know, lab supplies are up, but that's because mandated testing and everything, oh, that's always going to go up. Um, John, do you have anything else in the manufacturing expense side that you want to mention?
I, I will comment just in order, the, the education, they didn't get a lot of it in last year. So that's going to be, I would expect that expense, I mean, it's not a large expense, but that two thousand, I don't know, we'll meet that already next year.
Yeah, and we're going to face that with every fund because pretty much, you know, you know, every conference was canceled for, for most of the year and, and, and a, a lot of trainings were, were put off last year, because, you know, we were trying to pinch pennies to see what would happen, so.
A lot were just canceled in general.
Yeah.
Uh, nothing really sticking out right now. Uh, yeah, we could get into the maintenance, the form of maintenance. Yeah, but leave, leave the manufacturing, get into the maintenance of things. Couple items that, uh, I have highlighted. The four eighty-six, uh, you'll see the maintenance of equipment. Granted that the equipment is new, we don't see a whole lot of equipment we have replaced at this time. We do have a ground fault issue out there that we're kind of working through right now. So we, there could be some, uh, different protective equipment that we have to buy, uh, to, to make sure the equipment is protected. We, we have some issues during, during some storms where some surgeries have been going into plants, been, been tripped in the plant also, there, there's some items which we need to put in place. Studies have been done, ready to make sure that that plant is protected. So we were looking to, uh, purchase some, uh, protective equipment to make sure that the equipment stays, uh, it's not affected from surgeries and such. Uh, sludge removal, uh, we, we have reconciliation with Runkie. So the reconciliation is, we, the law this money here is, is for the pressing, because the sludge comes out and we have to press it into a cake. Uh, from there, it's loaded on to trucks and, and this split it over to Runkie, this, this, uh, scale dropped off at Runkie, they return, we bring the leach aid over, they. scale dropped off at rumpi, they return, we bring a machine over, they reconcile every quarter, you know, how much sludge went over? How much, how much of the lease you come over this way, then we reconcile out. But the majority of this cost for sludge removal is laubed, is for the pressing. And without receiving all of these leasing that we did in years past, there is some additional cost for the sludge removal. The reconciliation, you almost be a one for one, what went over, it's coming back, we, we reconcile each other out. With, with us wanting to bring in two loads over, sludge costs are up slightly, so. We've gotta look at years past, fifty-two thousand, seven hundred dollars here in two thousand eighteen, which is, which would be more realistic to a record slage in a one for one, then the press seat itself is gonna be, isn't that fifty thousand dollar range, so. Two thousand nineteen, you'll see it jumped up quite a bit, that was, that was due to the plant, all, all the activities was taking place in the plant where we had cleaned all, all the sludge for the construction phase. Make sense, sir?
That'll take us down to the, the office section. Most of the wages are fairly standard, other meter reading wages, there is a possibility of retirement there. I, I don't think that will happen, but is eligible.
Office?
Or, I'm, I'm sorry. Why is that? No, uh, that's, that's, yeah. Yeah, that's right. Talked about it the wrong year.
There's five employees at the office, five employees. We had five and a half, the part-time clerk is, is no more than even, so.
We might be able to reduce that, that line four oh nine then. And I would reduce it a little bit, but.
That was put in last year because we, we thought we would possibly retire the person that's in the show. Mr. James and, uh, seeing him, I did put him on the list this year, you know, I mean, it's never out of question, but I mean, anyone fair enough question, look at it that way.
Yeah, that's true.
I don't think he planned on it though, so I didn't put him in this year as far as the potential retiring.
Okay, so. What do you think, should I reduce that line item? The, do I, do I have my math wrong on that, I guess, is my question?
Yeah, he split between five hundred, four hundred, fifty fifty, um, as far as his wages go. I mean, you know, a little bit of overtime and stuff like that for him, but.
Yeah, we've got.
Last year, we had good candidates for potentially like retired.
Yeah, the payout for him would be twenty thousand dollars, if, if he were to retire, so. I, I guess we can leave it in and, and it is, I mean, we would be if he did retire.
Yeah, I, I heard they planned for him to retire. But, yeah.
He's technically eligible.
He would take one of those a little bit, probably, yeah, but.
And thankfully, he is back at work, you know, it's a blessing. It's nice to see him walking the streets of the area.
I mean, essentially, anyone who's trying to retire, whatever, you know, I expect in this world anytime, we don't know about it, so.
Yeah, that's true.
There's like help building a playhouse, like.
So, I'll leave that in for the, for the moment, if, if we decide we need to cut back this fund, that might be something we could reduce the line item. Have a whole lot in the HR stuff. I don't really have a whole lot through here to really shake my fist over, it's, it's, yeah, most of that, that expense is based on last year with just little minor changes. Do you have any thoughts, John, on that section or Amber?
I just noticed the line item on labor duration, I believe this is the year that they're gonna have the negotiations and the buyer, and those two, so I think.
Yeah, it's gonna be a nice year.
I think everyone's gonna be a nice bump from that, we'll just not make sure each one of those, everyone is nice bump from that section. So, I'll have to look at those numbers again, maybe, that's my suggestion for that.
Okay, I guess the, the next question is then for, for council is, what's your, your comfort level as far as how, how close we should be cutting this? And then, and then we can decide if we want to reduce some line items or increase line items or anything.
What, what's a payroll in sewer?
Do you know one? I got.
I would think our carryover should at least be enough to pay one payroll.
That's true, that, that certainly makes sense. Oh wait, I can, I can look it up.
I was saying, you can't balance, never tried so much, even, or.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's several ways to look at that.
Our system works when it wants to.
That's more than eight hundred dollars.
Yeah, definitely.
Sugar and caffeine, right?
More than five fifteen thousand.
Yeah, you're probably right. When I taught at Junior High, I would come down Main Street, see the kids coming out of voucher with a bill in one hand and a can of pop in the other. Head to the Junior High, I would go right, I changed my route.
That's a combination.
And then add a pad hormone.
A complete combination. I don't know about people.
So, one month, it's about seventy thousand dollars, so about, about thirty-five thousand a pay. Of course, that was January, so there was probably some, some extra pays in there, but, yeah, you know, to, to be safe, probably thirty-five thousand a, a pay. And that's that's gonna be a little tough to get out of this this particular fund, but we can get close, I think.
That's your homework assignment.
Okay, all right, I will try to get us another thirty-five thousand dollars out of here and then we can, we can, we can meet it today. Next meeting to figure out the differences. Okay, thank you, sir. Let's go to the four oh one fund. I don't know, we've got collections of four hundred ninety thousand, which is sort of what we've been shooting for, we've been on target for that for several years. Our note payment is about four hundred fifty-four thousand a year. And then the rest of that is all oh, I guess we do have the engineering cost, construction.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah, into four oh one, sewer improvement, uh, five hundred line, five hundred line, there's seventy-five thousand dollars for engineering. We have not filed out with the engineering permit, there, there were several items in the, the punch list that we were not satisfied with. So, we had a discussion, Mr. Geis, myself and Mr. Tennen, we were not satisfied with the punch list, there's items that needed to be finished. Some of the similar ones would have been the yard, we were not satisfied with the yard, we want to make sure we came back through and finish the yard to our expectation. One of the big drivers was the, the ability to, to process at full capacity. So, we had a five thousand gallon plant, we went, we went to seven thousand gallons, I'm sorry, seven million, I'm sorry, millions. We were not able to push that seven million through there without particular areas getting flooded within, within the operation. We went back and forth with engineering walls multiple times. We wanted to make sure that, that we were gonna able to make sure that seven million gallons was able to be processed to the plant as designed. And just here, months ago, we were able to come back and able to remove, it was, Joe was at twelve or sixteen inches.
Something like that.
Between twelve to sixteen inches where the UV ball was located, the disinfectant was located, there was a weir, if you will, that was doing some blockage. So, and through calculations, they found out they had removed so many inches of this concrete weir. So, we have not had a snowy vent or snowbed event, rainy vent, of the lot, five million gallons being processed there. But we feel pretty confident now with, with that being reduced out, the flow will be where we needed to be, that same amount of gallons. So, we were holding off our payment until the plant was at our expectation and design specifications. So, that's the reason for you, you'll see the seventy-five thousand dollars in engineering. Last count provided approximately sixty-six thousand, sixty-six thousand dollars that is owed to CP consultants, and we were holding back until everything met our, met our expectations. So, that's the reason for that. So, if, if things look like it's supposed to, we'll be making that, we'll come back to have the council with, with its final data to CP consultants, it's right around the sixty-six thousand dollars. Uh, yeah, we come down to five thirty-six construction. One thing that we did not address during the upgrade was the replacement of roofs, we, we already had projects, the cost of the project was beating up here. We wanted to back off on certain items, there are three roofs that need replaced, I mean, we have three, uh, three areas. One in the mainous garage, one in the boiler room, and one in the digest here that are leaking, and those need to be replaced, these roofs are thirty plus years old. So, we took, we're getting some leakies on, on equipment, so we can make sure we protect everything, so that's, that's the construction expenditure there, is for three roofs that, that need attention this year. Good. Questions there?
Okay, everybody's okay with the four oh one fund, that takes us to four oh two. Our collections of two twenty have been sort of on par. John, can you more talk about the stormwater management collections?
Absolutely. Yeah, and first I want to, uh, want to say thank you to council for offering the stormwater management collection. It's lower, you know, it's supposed to be not there yet. One, one vote into the three votes, so if, if council continues to pass stormwater management collection, it would normally take like eighty-five thousand dollars a year. This year, being a short year, we're, we're projected to be up to fifty-five thousand dollars, so. This would be a new line within the four oh two question. I might, I might say thank you too early, but it's, I'll say thank you in a few years. Let's, let's go down to sewer improvement fund, the expenditure lines. Five hundred engineering, there, there's almost eleven thousand dollar carryover. There's some engineering expenses for the downtown enhancement project that's, that's gonna be due. And the arse of middle flow unit, I talked about a little bit ago, for the arse of middle, the sewers coming back to us, there's gonna be some engineering expenses here as well. So, that's the reason for the thirty-five thousand dollars. The next line from there would be five fifteen, hundred and forty thousand dollars. Forty thousand dollars for that is for water heaters, seventy-two thousand dollars for that is for the lab grant out of West Main Street. That's coming out of this fund as well. So, we have that. Those three items. The next one below that, would it be the five thirty-one miscellaneous? We have twenty thousand dollars in that line for the GIS, GIS system, again, with the, the different funds are supported in the GIS. Sixteen thousand, two hundred dollars for the GIS program that we have. This is the bottom here, yes, sir?
Back up just a little bit, if you don't mind, the stormwater management collections. It sticks in my mind if there's a line item or, or something somewhere or catch basins.
Yes, it'd be the three fifty-three streets and catch basins.
Does that, does that come over under this fund then, is that something that's gonna happen or is that something that keeps separate?
I have them separated, but I mean, it's definitely a discussion that the council could have, and I have them separated. The, the streets and streets, the three fifty-three streets and catch basins, it's kind of odd how the stormwater base was designed in the four hundred, four oh two business. Does it all kind of work towards the same, same goal of making sure the catch basins are replaced and repaired in, in new condition? This would help support that stormwater management. This building, and that line collapsed, so the line was ran to the other side of the road, which is not sufficient enough to control and handle the stormwater in that area. So, that's one particular area that we have our eyes on group with, with these funds. It's, it's areas like that, areas out, uh, some years back, when that stormwater line collapsed under the railroad, it's areas like, areas like that. Behind, several residents over there behind West Park Drive that led up to Arse of Middle, there's a storm line behind there that has collapsed. We have an idea, Baron I was out there back last, I think, May, June, listening to the residents, there's areas like that, they're all over the city. Stormwater is, 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 is an issue in the four oh two fund to support stormwater and the sanitary. So, this is gonna bring those additional funds in to support the sewerage, sewerage, not sewer edge, but sewer edge, which is the combination between both sanitary and stormwater. So, it helps, it helps us, it helps the fund out where we can get a lot of these projects done. I'm about ready to answer your question about, do we have another particular line?
I was just curious about that, I, I didn't know if that was gonna be, you know, established as a separate kind of.
Well, when I was designing this, uh, you know, I was looking at the four oh two, I was looking at the three fifty-three, and I was looking at, uh, four, I guess, four eighty-six, which is stormwater management. We have a stormwater management chapter, and it kind of fell within my eyes, it fell within a lot of that four eighty-six, stormwater management, so.
All right, thanks. And may I say too, with that conversation, it was brought to our attention, there are other municipalities around us that do have some funding that would enable for projects like, just like John is saying. So, this is, and again, very, very thankful, hopefully move forward, that I think it's a good move, that direction, that we have a few extra shekels to, to put into some of these projects where we didn't have anything before, are very gold.
The construction, uh, line five thirty-six, five thirty-six line construction, a hundred ninety thousand. There's a carryover, carryover of fifty-two thousand. We have the East Main Street sanitary sewer project at seventy-one thousand, but that's, that's all gonna be money coming back to us through, through grants and such. There's still, I have, I have a twenty-five thousand dollar.
Is that the reimbursed here in the fund?
Not that one, yeah, we do have to talk about that as well. BK Layer, we, we saw BK Layer folks have worked it, done twenty-seven thousand as well, so, yeah, there's additional carryover. And yes, we do, we do have that twenty-five thousand dollar payment from the four oh two to the three hundred fund. That was for a project several years back, I think, two thousand fifteen, sixteen. Where right before Mansfield Avenue was gonna be paved, we, there is a sanitary line from the lower avenue that crossed over Mansfield Avenue. We wanted to get that repaired first, but didn't have sufficient funds, so we borrowed that from three hundred, so the four hundred now owes the three hundred fund back twenty, so we, there's a hundred thousand dollars, so this would be a payment. So, it's twenty-five thousand dollars. So, that's, that's part of that as well, yes.
My only additional comment, I do have, uh, receiving sixty-three thousand dollar state grants and aid. I, I had made, uh, no, it was West Main Sewer, that might be the East Main Sewer funds that we're getting. I, I, I very well can put that, I know, oh, it's silly Main Sewer. So, but I do have, I have a new recorded in there. That's all I, oh, and obviously the, the debt payment, um, is all new. And those are, those are gonna change, right Amber? That's, because it's still construction a little on, on West Main. So, that will go up next year, but this will be our, our two thousand twenty-one, um, payments in terms of those. That's all I have for the four oh two fund, unless anybody has any comments. Okay, um, that's gonna take us to the five hundred fund, water. I don't really have any major thoughts on a lot of the revenue items. They obviously should, should go up this year. Hopefully we won't COVID, using lots of waters, they go out and do things in the communities.
With the collections, again, the, the water collections were down based off those top fifty customers. I guess down a little over a couple percent. But what they had to do on the note would be line one fifty-seven, the sale of water, that's the bulk water. Now, if you look at two thousand eighteen actual, two thousand nineteen actual, or two thousand twenty actual, uh, you can see quite an increase in revenue at the bulk water station now. Instead of having the, the, the blue tickets, which is on our system, you take the blue ticket, put it in the bucket, and you operate the valve. I'll, let the numbers speak for themselves. So, yeah, we, we, we knew, uh, the program's working well, that, once we got it ruled out, uh, it was kind of a, I think it was March, April, May tighter there rule out. So, the revenue to be moved out higher that will be projected here, so I, I do, I do think it's gonna be higher than fifty thousand. And we do have a lot of apartment community to come in that, that utilizes that service.
My only other note on the, uh, income side of things is the two oh five, the miscellaneous income, that was like a hundred and seven thousand in twenty twenty. The vast majority of that was a refund from workers' comp. They gave us a lot of money, uh, the latter part of last year. So, that's why it was so high. We don't expect that again in twenty twenty-one.
Uh, if we're gonna be focused on the water treatment plant, there are five employees. Just five employees, five employees at the water treatment.
Okay, capital projects, uh, looks like there's some painting to be done at the reservoir three buildings. So, that's what that ten thousand dollars is accounted for.
Yeah, we're trying to keep those buildings looking, looking nice. We painted it like six, seven years ago, but they're, they're indeed a, a paint, painting again. A lot of, a lot of community members, residents, go out to reservoir number three and walk, to walk the, uh, upper trail on that. Uh, and into the Black Fork, uh. Well, nice, thank you, thank you. So, we want to, we want to make it look nice out there, and the kiosk out there, uh, those are in horrific shape. The superintendent and I have been discussing that. He is actually working with the, uh, one of the instructors out of Pioneer to have the students make the repairs, but due to some of the restrictions that was taking place last year, they were not allowed to come in and make the repairs. So, we're still trying to utilize the services of, of Pioneer students to be able to come in and repair that kiosk for us. So, shingles and repaint it and such, make it look nice, so.
Okay, um, capital projects for the offices are the same as the four hundred fund. So, nothing surprising there. Uh, distribution capital projects. So, we've got some more water meters. What amount of that thirty-five thousand is for water meters, John?
Uh, twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars for water meters out of a particular line.
There are a few hydrants to replace this year.
Yeah, hydrants, hydrants cost about three thousand dollars per hydrant. And we're gonna try to purchase two hydrants, uh, out of this particular fund this year.
Alright, and then the only other, the dump truck, that's just this fund's share of that. If nobody has any questions about that section, we can move on to distribution. Distribution, some more HR stuff. So, really, no retirement or anything out of this section. Really not a whole lot of notable changes to this. Most of the increases are, you know, I see the maintenance for equipment's up a little bit. And meters and related supplies are up a little bit, uh, but nothing, nothing too outlandish. It's just all stuff that needs to be done. John, do you have any real thoughts on that section?
No, mentioning the meters, uh, we use this fund here to purchase meters that are one inch or greater. These are more for the commercial industrial meters, because we're trying to keep this centered from the, uh, residential meters that we're replacing, so we're, we're trying to keep those funds centered.
Okay, manufacturing, um, section. Left that a little high from last year. Is there a potential retirement in the manufacturing section, John?
No.
They have a lot of overtime that's what happened.
That's why I left it high.
Yeah, because they were shorthanded for quite a while in that department.
Oh, then we're using five guys to cover a twenty-four seven operation.
Right, they still, honestly, they, they have high overtime in the payroll in that, in that department.
And this is one of the reasons, uh, superintendent and I were discussing a, a SCADA system for the water treatment plant based off of the, the operation of a five man operation for a twenty-four seven operation, I guess. Then, as you can see, it's not in the budget.
So, I.
I, I mean, yeah, you look at twenty nineteen actual, uh, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, it, it can go off, so maybe it is best to leave that.
I probably said, they probably have a lot of overtime in that department.
So, we'll, we'll leave that in unless you guys wanna change it. Rest of the resources stuff is, is all pretty much the same.
Oh, we, we track, so going back to that. At what point does the tipping point of paying so much overtime cause us to say we need a sixth person to cover twenty-four seven shifts?
Look at benefits before we start paying.
Well, I understand, I don't look at, but that's why I'm asking, we're paying.
We pay almost, you know, forty percent of benefits, but maybe overtime is a little bit cheaper.
Yeah, yeah, benefits are in there.
I suppose it depends on which financial territory you go to, but with, with, with my longevity here, you go back to small, some finances from the past, it was cheaper to pay the overtime than it is to support another employee.
It is, unless you find someone that's older than you, but part time, which is hard to do.
I would say, you know, do it as long as you, the people will stand it, you know, when, when it gets to that point, maybe it's, you know, worth looking at doing something different, but.
It's the benefits that really make the difference. Ways to wage, it equals box the same, but when you start looking at the benefit package, that's really about.
I get that, I just, you know, tabs on it, because there is a certain point where the overtime comes, well, okay.
Currently, the employees enjoy the overtime, they've been over the place in the market.
Um, one notable line item I have here is the four thirty-five, um, line item of property liability insurance. That dropped like a rock in twenty twenty, and that's because, um, and thank you Joe for your hard work with both this facility and the, uh, utilities office. Uh, those buildings are, are no longer out of the floodplain, we were able to prove that to the insurance company. And obviously, the flood insurance for something in the floodplain is rather expensive. So, that saved us, what, twenty-three thousand dollars in this line item? So, that's fabulous. So, that, that's why that is so much lower.
Where's the line item for Joe's bonus?
That's, that's right.
We'll talk about that.
Now, we're talking.
Twenty-three thousand.
Just chip in and buy him another pizza.
That's right. Maybe he had chips with it too. Uh, so, let's see, equipments, what do we? Uh, well, I guess it's about the same as normally budgeted. Want to say, I have a, um, oh, some of those things are now going to that, that asset management fund, um, which we could discuss here in a few moments. That's why the expenses were less out of that last year. John, do you have anything with the equipment labs? Sort of, uh, expenses in this fund?
You're, you're in the manufacturing now?
Uh, yes.
Okay, yes, I know. Yeah, with the, with manufacturing, uh, this is where I, I say thank you and applaud council for passing the asset management, uh, surcharge. That, you know, with the, with the note payment paid off. That, that allows some creativity in my mind, that I actually had this in back of my mind for some time. And once that note was paid off, to utilize that surcharge that would be in collection to pay the note payment, to divide that into two different surcharges. One, asset management, that is mandated, that is something we, we, we have to do, that's mandated by the, the HOE P A. The asset management is exactly the same, you're managing your assets. So, the pumps, motors, controllers, the rocks, the whatever, whatever is associated as an asset to the, to the water system. That, that is in our asset management plan. I have two forged binders that, that make up the asset management plan. And one of those binders is actually all of the assets that are listed in there. And we have a schedule of when these assets are due to be, uh, replaced, rebuilt, uh, whatever, it has to be looked at. That way, that plant stays in tip-top shape. You wanna make sure that this plant is, is running as, as most efficient as it can without failure. Now, you, you can rebuild a motor, as we all know, in the next, a week, an hour, it's a fail. Same with a pump. Uh, but this is a plan that allows you, the funds, to control those assets on a succession plan. So, I, I really thank council for this. That, that's gonna allow the funds, necessary funds to make sure that our plant stays in, in great operating condition. So, the note's paid off, I think we're looking to have a note, uh, quote, or, sorry, I mean. But the, uh, the one area that we're gonna be looking at there, um, and I have a note myself, I, we, we put in forty thousand dollars in equipment under the five hundred manufacturing, five fifteen. I don't think it's gonna be necessary this year because we're gonna be relying on the asset management thing. I shouldn't say that. Asset management, uh, collection. So, I don't think we're gonna need the forty thousand. It was just, just more of a comfort for me right now, just to see how we're gonna be rolling through the asset management with the collections. Because I think to date, hang on, we got like forty-five thousand sitting there, so it's collecting two hundred thousand dollars throughout the year, but we just started the program. So, it needs to build the fund up before we can really start making the expenditures, and that's one of the reasons why I put the forty thousand in there, just to lean on this until we can get the fund kind of built up, so. That is the reason for that. Hope that makes sense. Let, let me talk chemicals. If we look at two thousand eighteen, you can see the absorbment that we had to spend in chemicals. We had issues at, at the reservoir, we had, uh, chemical consistency issues at the plant, it was, it was just a nightmare. We got that under control, two thousand nineteen, we came in, we was able to almost lower by, what, ninety thousand dollars, we was down to a hundred and ninety-six thousand. This year, we're slightly up a two oh six. The benefit of, of hiring our superintendent as we did, uh, he has connections, uh, he comes from Willard. And he and I, I was in a conversation about chemical costs, because that's always my line, where's the chemical cost? What do we have for the year? It was just back to my mind, always goes back to cost magnates, it's not, do, do we need to go out for bid for chemicals? Well, Willard did go out for bid for chemicals, and bonded chemical was the, is the supplier. So, having a superintendent who was a former employer of Willard, knew of that contract that they signed with bonded chemicals, and knew of the cost for chemicals there versus the cost of chemicals that we're paying here from the same supplier, bonded versus bonded. So, we picked up the phone, called Bond and said, we know what you're paying up there, we put the cost down here. So, they said okay. So, we was able to lower the cost of chemicals. So, so, I'm not opposed to go out for bid. I think we just do diligence to get the cost down certainly, so I, I'm hoping that this two oh six is gonna be a lot lower coming in this year than was, uh, this previous year. Yeah, I thought that was it, and I thought that was very interesting, you know, that they just openly said, not a problem, we'll, you know the cost up there, that should be the cost down here where you go out for bid now.
For a little background, back in the day, we bid out everything. Fire hydrants, valves, transformers, wire, uh, utility poles, we bid everything every year. And, you know, the, the general thought was back then is you, you, you know, let everyone, an open process, you let people come in and, and put in a bid, and, you know, it's, uh, the best way to do it. Well, you know, here's a case where we didn't bid, Willard bid, but we're getting the benefits of Willard doing the work for us. So, um, but it's somewhat like the insurance that Brian said, you know, at some point, you know, it does make sense to put the insurance out for everybody and, and see what happens.
So, it was nice having, uh, Mr. Dieter Meyer being able to kind of work some of his thoughts from his previous order to where we can bring the benefits over here and, and his work, so. We're gonna sort of see those, the, the, uh, lower costs going forward throughout this year, so. Let me just give you a quick example, we're looking at a reduction of about twenty-four thousand five hundred seventy-nine dollars according to his figures. So, he's looking at the savings for the chemical, uh, based off the tons that we use, he's looking at right around almost twenty-five thousand dollars in savings. That, that's got, that's beneficial, so. Another thing I want to mention about chemicals is the sonication units that we are, uh, we have in the reservoirs. If you see the, the floating rafts out in, in the reservoirs, they were, it's, they work awesome. And they, 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 they control the algae and it's, it's, it's unbelievable what these things are doing. And I've got knock on wood, hopefully have those two this year, because those units are working. The, the amount of chemicals that we had to put into the reservoirs last year versus the year before has reduced significantly. Let me, let me explain to you about the actual, the expen, actual expenses. If you look at two thousand nineteen, because that was the first year that we had reservoir chemical line item, uh, forty-nine thousand four hundred twenty-six. That was, that was an actual expenditure to treat that year. It was a little bit of carryover for, for this, this year, right, two thousand twenty. Last year, we spent thirty thousand four sixty-four. That, that number is somewhat skewed of the fact that only, we only spent seventeen thousand of that was for treating this, yeah. I mean, I, I reversed whenever. In November of this year, of that thirty thousand, we spent seventeen thousand seven hundred thirty-two dollars for stock to go into next year. The money was available, and we went to take advantage of the, the, the billability of the, having the chemical on it, be able to treat the reservoir at any time we needed, because the stock was low. So, we took advantage of the funds that was available and we put it in, in stock. So, of that thirty thousand four sixty-four, seven, almost eighteen thousand. So of that thirty thousand four sixty-four, seven, almost eighteen thousand of that was for chemicals, chemicals to stop going into this year. So we already have a good supply of, of stock for this year already. So, you know, those, those sonication units are doing the work, and it's, it's, it's impressive. You hear about these new pieces of equipment at Razz's out there. There was some history, but not a lot of history, and you think, God, these things are really going to worth it? Is it worth it? The return on investment's been one year, uh, so it's, it's been nice. It's, it's, it's made for me. Longevity wise, we're, we're going to find out. We're going to keep these things out there and then just keep on busting up the algae.
Did we have some repairs on, manufacturer took care of some of them?
There was, there was, there was a, uh, one of the solar panels, way was charging. And they, they came in and pulled it and replaced.
Well, it pays for itself in one year.
Right.
And it lasts you two years. We can go out and get other money. Like, it's not, right, you know, it's not like we're holding our breath waiting for a five-year return on investment. We've already, we've already got the return on investment, and so everything else from here on out, gravy, right? So, I mean, that's, that's where you want to be, but it's something that was, we took a little bit of leap on it. You know, hey, we're vindicated, moving on.
And, and God forbid, I say that reverently, that something go bad with the reservoir. Because then, you know, you know, we're gone, we're done.
They know, I want to applaud the operators doing a fantastic job of making sure that the reservoir stay, that source water stays within the realms of EPA limits for algae. If you have any algae blooms, they know how to treat it, and they, they do, they do a fantastic job. So kudos to the water crew guys, they, they do a great job for us. Five guys, management to do it, it's, it's quite impressive. My ass off to them. They, they make our lives a lot easier. Let's see here, uh, I can move over to maintenance.
You're a walk with yourself.
In the maintenance, uh, I'm going to be leaning on the line four eighty-six. Line four eighty-six, uh, once every five years, we need to have the frogmen come in, suit up, coordinate, and, and get into the clear walls to do the inspections. So this is the fifth year, so I don't remember the video we had here five years ago, where the guys went and actually suit up, and they, they go in and record and inspect the interior walls, the structure of the clear walls. So the clear walls are right in front of the plant, of the ground, so that we have to have those inspected, that's, that's mandated. So that, I don't know if we're going to get cost down, it's, it's expensive. I don't have it, I know it's expensive. It's not all of that, it's not all of forty-five thousand, but it's kind of like a large portion of that to do the inspection of. And, you know, leaning on the asset management for the rest of the maintenance of the equipment, so.
Do you have a ballpark, just off the top of your head?
Let's see, up to twenty-five, close to twenty-five, it's close, it's close to dip mark. Or getting, getting approval from council, very close to that. I think it's slightly, but it's real close to that. I'm sorry, I don't have it, but it's, it's just slightly, it's on the five mark.
We also have, I think, nine thousand encumbered in that fund from last year, so. About ten grand or so for general maintenance.
All right, let this, uh, under the maintenance as well, under five twenty, five two zero, sludge removal. There was, it was kind of hit and miss years ago, but after discussing this with the superintendents, we need to have a plan in place for sludge removal every year. There's only so many lagoons out there, and they only hold so much sludge. So every year, we need to clean the, a lagoon out. We started that last year, and we're going to do it again this year. So if you don't have those lagoons cleaned out, there's nowhere for the sludge to go, and it gets to be an issue. We were skimping on, on last year, we were, the, the lagoons were so full, it was, it was close to the nerving point. Like, I mean, how much work do you slide in there? So.
We got very close.
We were very close. We were close.
I remember sure.
Remember that, they were full. So now we're in the process of every year, we're going to budget money for sludge removal. So this year's one of the smaller lagoons out there. We budgeted fifty thousand, I don't think it's going to come near that. You see, last year, we, we budgeted fifty, we spent forty-seven thousand four hundred dollars. That was for one of the larger lagoons. So this year, we're going to be doing one of the smaller lagoons, so it should be a lot less, less money. But putting fifty thousand in there just, just for, just in case.
Once, once they're cleared out, we'll be on a cycle, we, we will pump it out, but you think I'll be less, right? It's not going to be five thousand every year.
Correct.
It's only these first couple of years, right? And then it's going to start tapering off. But we'll keep up with it, so it won't ever have to be fifty thousand dollars again.
Hopefully not, that, that's the goal here. There, I mean, there's different sized lagoons out there. The one that was forty-seven thousand was the larger lagoon, but it was exceptionally full. So, yeah, price is going to increase for, for that service, but hopefully we don't come and see that, that type of cost. Because this, this cost is passed on to the rate payers through the PCA, the protection cost adjuster. That's all calculated in that, so. Yeah, so the lower we can keep it, the lower the PCA rate. Okay. Any other questions here?
Okay, now that's, that's all I have for the maintenance section. That takes us down to the office. Most of the wages and such are all just like the sewer, all the foreign fun, nothing surprising there. Remind me again, for the people in the office, how their water, sewer, and electric, how that's broken down?
Answers, what, wages?
Yeah.
As percentage, um, it's different per employee, actually, I'd have to look it up.
Oh, okay, I thought it was.
Generally speaking, it won't be a utility office, any expenditure, that's split between the three, fifty per, typically fifty percent goes to, um, electric, and then twenty-five, twenty-five to the water and sewer.
That's, that's good now.
Yeah.
Let's see here, uh, yeah, property insurance is down, because utility office is also out of the floodplain. Nothing too surprising with, really, too much of anything in this line item.
Maybe, say, five thirty one. In case you have a known or a question or highlight it as such, if you look at line five thirty-one, actual in, in twenty twenty, you're going to see that slightly increased from the previous year. The reason for that, uh, when we had the boot tickets, when we sold those boot tickets for the Wal, Wal-Mart station, we did refund, if somebody purchased that, there was a refund for those tickets. So if they bought them, or we told it was only, it was only fair that if they used, bought the ticket, they could have used it, they wanted to refund that. So that's, that's the reason for that slight bump up.
Unlike gift cards you buy that expire, you don't use them, right?
Yeah. We were pit scooters, I guess. Yeah, again, it's a lot of the farming community, uh, they had those, they had those Wal-Mart tickets. To their respect, uh, we wanted to make sure they, they were treated fairly. They do use that, the services, because you've seen that bump up in the Wal-Mart sale, going to make that.
Software upgrade for the system?
Software upgrade, uh, CPO, that, uh, let's see, that's back on page ten, line. Line five thirty, on page ten. A little page down there, CPO, you see, uh, seventy-five hundred dollars, office equipment, furniture, fixtures, quote, Billy software. Page, I can't, I, is your page here?
Not page ten.
I'm sorry.
Need to go back?
Uh, here we are, the top of the main is, this is under the five hundred fund. You've got a five hundred capital, right below that's five hundred CPO. And it, and it mirrors what's in the four hundred.
Gotcha, okay, so that's what it's, all right, thank you.
That's pretty much all I have. As ever said, I probably have a little bit of old neighbor relations, uh, as I can see that. But, uh, that's, that's about it for, for that fund. All in all, we'll have forty-six thousand five hundred left in that fund, if everything goes exactly as projected. Um, I think some of our expenses have, have some cushion room, and I think some of our revenue items are pretty conservative. So I'm not too worried about, about this fund, not, not near as much as the four hundred.
Four hundred funds, we have our EVO item all year, just, yeah.
We just need to get through this year on that one. It should be, read it a little bit.
It's coming.
It's coming.
That's right. Okay, five oh one fund, which is now our water asset management fund. Collections is now two hundred thousand instead of three hundred thousand, we're adjusting that down. Because this, this was the fund we used to pay off, um, the water treatment plant. And that last payment, if you get down to the expenditures, the five oh one debt payment, we have allocated one forty-two for the note payment to the interest. That's the final payment, which has already been made this year. So that's kind of what now this legislation is, is going through to, to change that, to, to change the purpose of this fund slightly. As far as the actual expenditures, other than the note payments, John, do you want to talk about anything?
And just to clarify, the, uh, under the five oh one, middle page, where's, or WTP Water Treatment Plant? That'd be water asset management?
Oh, yeah, well, we can change that, the system.
You missed, you mentioned it as, um, asset management top here, okay. All right. Wrong file, strange program. All right, uh, let's see here. Couple new line items under the five oh two, there's two new line items here. We created line four eighty-six, which is maintenance of equipment. You'll see what's twenty-five thousand dollars, that this is new, as, as you've pre-sighted. So that's a new line item here. We also have a new line item, five zero seven, for maintenance of the buildings. And you can see how the money's been kind of dispersed under this new collection of two hundred thousand dollars a year to maintain the assets. We put a hundred thousand dollars in equipment, that way we can start moving through the replacement of motors, controllers, pumps and such. The operators already, the superintendent already have a list of what they, once the funds are available, to start moving forward with some of the replacements. Other items they need to take a look at there. Construction, uh, again, I, I go back to the rocks. Rocks are part of the asset management. The Ohio Department of Natural Resources, once every five years comes in, they, they go through and they scour the reservoir to take a look at the structural, solid structure of, of the, uh, upground reservoir, which is a dam, it's a class three dam. And the rocks along the north shore, if you will, is, I can't say it's erosion. I don't know if the, the rocks had slid, but there's, there's, the rocks are usually the size, you know, the good-sized rocks up here. We kind of reduced that to the size of a fist, or small angle tunnels and such. I'm sure if the larger rocks can push down whatever, whatever reason, they need to be replaced, or we need to pull buildings up or something. So I, that's part of the asset management. It's been noted in the inspection from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, that that north embankment needs new rocks. So we budgeted twenty-five thousand dollars to place new rocks up here. Thankfully, the asset management fund is available. We were informed, probably several years back during inspection, and we did start limiting these rocks. We appropriately hold it off until we got, we had a fund in play, so. Thank you all for allowing the funds to be played, so now we go put the rocks up here. Pay for money in the rocks, but as the saying goes, it is what it is. Next line, go that, five sixty-five, twenty-five thousand dollars for a pickup truck, that's a new line. There, needed a new truck at the water plant. I remember it's several years back, they were using the old taxi, uh, from the taxi. They went to the Durango that's assigned to the utility office, I let them have that. But that's not in the best of shape anymore, so they, they need a truck. They just need something. They make rows to the reservoirs, they're growing, they're driving the guy, and they're driving the Willard, they have samples that can be sent out. They, they tend to the premises there, they, they plow the, uh, reservoir locations. They're, they're, they're in charge of that, so they need a truck. This truck doesn't have a plow on it, uh, question?
You buying a used truck for twenty-five thousand dollars?
No, for a new truck, I think the parks had a, they covered about twenty-five.
Yeah, they, they got theirs for a little under twenty-five.
They're saying the park got one for that price.
Yeah, yeah, the, the park got a, an F-150 for a little less than twenty-five grand last year.
Oh, is that right? Do you want to buy a half-ton truck?
A half-ton? No, this, this was not, doesn't aim for a plow. The other, the other truck go out with a plow.
Oh, okay.
No, if we, if we decide to bump it up to a three-quarter ton, which, which, they, they feel they did not need a three-quarter ton, they thought a half-ton, a half-ton truck is just fine for the purpose of taking supplies and such to the, to the reservoirs or the outline areas at least. I think they're just happy with a, a new vehicle.
Sounds like a deal.
Instead of putting a couple of those in there, a taxi truck and five of those works. Yes, so that is the asset management fund, so those leave expenditures.
That, that would leave us with sort of a, a small balance of about five grand, if everything went exactly as, as quoted. But I'm not, not too worried about that, because, you know, pretty much everything in this line is like, well, if we don't have the money right now, we don't need to get it. So, um, I'm not too worried about that one balance. Unless anybody has, has any questions, that will take us to the five hundred and two, water capital improvement fund. So we budgeted two hundred eighty-five thousand for collections, which is sort of our, our average, that's what we're, we're shooting for. The note payment for the year is eighteen thousand three hundred. You notice in the two thousand nineteen, I'm sorry, on line five hundred and three, uh, the two thousand nine, two thousand twenty actual expenses was nine thousand one hundred, one thou, come on, Brian. Nine thousand one hundred forty-seven dollars, which is half of the, the payment. Well, what happened was, when the July payment came, Ohio just decided that, that, you know what? We're just not going to process this, and we'll just tack it on the end, there's no interest charge. It was one of their COVID relief plans. So, you know, hey, if they want to just add a little more payment on the end, and as long as they're not charging us interest, that's fine. They didn't really even give us an option, they just did it. So, so that's why it was low last year, um, but it will be eighteen thousand this year. John, do you want to talk about some of the operating expenses on this one?
That was five oh two, uh, four ninety, line four ninety hydrants. You'll see that's up considerably from the years previous. Twenty-one thousand dollars, again, the, the cost for hydrants is very close to three thousand dollars, and we need to replace seven hydrants. So when, when the fire department goes out and runs their test, once a year they do the, the citi by flush, it's reported how many hydrants are in, in a condition of needing repair or replaced. That's, that's how the stepper come about, so that's the reason we have noted for seven. We usually, we usually have about three to be replaced, but this year is noted to have seven to be replaced. So that's the reason we, we increased there.
John, we had talked a little bit, just in passing, after they did the, uh, the fire department did the pressure test. You have these dead-end lines on, you know, like you said, like South Street Summit, you know, and, uh, talking about the necessity of looping those, where's, where's that?
That is about a year or so out. But those, those, that area and West Park Drive, those are the two areas that, that the fire department has noted, and the service department have noted. Those are probably the two worst areas, that they, they either, the four-edge lines need to be replaced, because they're, they're four-edge lines. Making them loop, we probably just need to replace the four-edge with a new line.
Well, I think, I think the fire department has done more than noted those. I, I, the chief is very concerned. That, that, that they would have to run, do, do any, if they have a structural fire, they'd have to run the hoses from Walnut Street down. They could not get sufficient fire pressure, you know, I'm assuming there's a hydrant at the end of, of South Street, but it is, it just wouldn't work.
Yeah, and we, we've had conversations with, with the, with the fire chief as well, to that particular area. to that particular area and the West Park Drive area, and both have been noted. We had to put about a five asset, the worst of the two levels there. They're they're both about the same cost.
And the population counts that are in those districts and so forth kind of played in his thinking as well.
And and you, the reason why you replied that was by year out is is because of the funds, the available funds within the 502. We're getting very close. One of the major expenses within the 502 right now is the water tower.
I see that.
So that's $172,000 this year, then we drop off to 117,000 next year. So it's 172,466 this year, year five, next year 117,000, then we drop down to 65,000. But those those two areas are, we're zeroed in. We we know they need to be replaced and they're on the radar to get those two particular areas fixed. So it all comes out of funds, of course.
As it always does.
Yes, unfortunately. You know, it's kind of in the, it's in the planning. You know it needs to be done, you're you're waiting for that, the the funds become available. That's the reason why I mentioned you'll run your out. It's a good note, you know, we, I'll I'll make a note of that. I'm here with Mr. Lucheski to start working on that quote. That way we have something to work with.
As Mr. Lucheski says, all the easy stuff has been done already.
That's so true.
Good point.
Everything but the funding, right?
That's right.
Or we, John, we have maybe the equipment in 515, we talked about that yet?
515 equipment, $65,000 was budgeted for equipment. $40,000, that's for water meters, and $10,000, that's for the vent track. 531, I I suppose it's not a wish, but maybe a thought. We we backed off this one last year because of a lot of restrictions that's taking place with COVID. I don't know if you all can see some of my notes on there, but under the 531 miscellaneous, GIS is $16,000 of that, again, finally here that they'll be able to the GIS system. I have a note in here, seed for reservoir number one. We are looking to develop a pollinating field on reservoir number one. Looking at the expenses, it costs about $2,500 a year to mow that property. We do not want to mow it. I I agree with the mayor that I think, I I'd like to see it myself. I I have a personal interest in this, become a B city, I'll go with mayor. I just, I think it's fantastic. I have a great vision. I would love it, and I think I think it's a wonderful idea. So we chose number one reservoir site to become a pollinating field. There could be a seed cost for that, and it can be free. We are we are working with Bee and Butterfly Habitat Fund, and they would supply us with free seed for that that location. So we're working through the soil sample right now, it's being analyzed. Once we hear back from county and state officials, what's native seed would be best, we're going to reach out to Bee and Butterfly Habitat and the county to figure out what seed would be best suited for that location. The other the other area that I'm looking at, and it's, again, it's just a wish, would be, I'm going to call it the Love Property. That's a property that's adjacent to the water treatment plant, it's four and a half acres behind, just beside the water treatment plant, the property's built up. The Loves own two homes up on Gamble Avenue. They're they are looking to sell those properties this year. They backed off last year, it's kind of forward to this year. They're looking to sell those properties with that, that that four and a half acre acreage would go with with one of those properties or somebody, but it's kind of landlocked in a sense. Because only people in Gamble or or the city of Shelby, being a municipal plant, can buy that property. So that was another vision for a pollinating field as well.
John, do you have other reasons why you're interested in that?
I do, I do. Polling field is kind of secondary to the others. One would be, there is a, there are multiple utility facilities back here. There is an open ditch line, you got the river tracks, you got the property. Our crews maintain the open ditch for for storm management. There's storm water that flows along there that need maintained. John, I'm not sure if you have an ease of the bank from all of here. Sure we do.
I believe so.
So we do have these. But there's also a sanitary trunk plant that runs through that property. And reservoir number two, raw water flows right down through the middle of that. So just to have access to those facilities, and it gives us access to the river where the Love Property comes over. You have the CSX bridge sitting right here. It would give us access to get to that bridge if there is blockage. So looking at storm water drains to the river, and it kind of makes an S turn right there. There's always seems to be blockages right there. And the crews are always back there asking, hey, can we get in there to pull off this blockage?
Gee, I thought CSX took care of that.
But to keep the water moving and all the other property along that, someone buy the water treatment facility.
Trestle, right?
It is, it's a trestle.
I'd I'd like to see a map that has all the properties, has all these utilities. I've been a skeptic about the Love Property, that's no.
Sure, that was much better.
But, you know, I I want to see this raw water line and all these things, you know. You know, convince me, please.
Sure.
On that trestle, it's like, it's got two areas for the water. And over here is the one area of sediments built up, so it only gets through half of that.
Joe, would you like to use that on your computer? Would you have to pull that up somehow?
The map with all the utilities?
Yeah. Okay, yeah, we'll we'll write that. Yeah, I get it. And the cost for that, the four and a half acres, I I had a conversation with the company owner's son, Mr. Douglas, $9,370 for the four and a half acres. And I've also talked to schools about it, Mr. Randy Eisenhower, to see if he'd be willing to come on in and help develop a pollinating field for back there. So the vision with the pollinating field, you'd have a green space around it for walking access, let the neighbors allow, continue to walk the dogs, etc., whomever would want to go back and walk. So and it kind of falls in with with the thought of becoming a B city. Again, that was just kind of a, the wish, just not necessarily, it's just a wish. Okay, the next line down there from 536, construction, water tower. Again, the payment this year is around $173,000.
Which towers that?
That would be for both towers.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so that's how much for both. Mickey Road, $86,418. Verda Road, $86,48.
This is part of that tenure contract, right?
That's correct.
What does that, what does that go on?
Last payment would be 2026.
It's going down.
Yes, it's trending down. This is one of the, the, one, two, three, four, one, two, three, fourth highest year. Next year, we trend down to 117, then drops to 65, 67, 70, 35.
That's continual even after 10 years of, just for maintenance and.
Well, at 10 years, they said we're going to have to.
Reevaluate.
Repainting cycle.
What line is that we're talking about?
Construction.
Construction, correct, maybe line 536, construction, it's $20,000.
Lexington and Ontario are using that same service now.
And it makes sense enough to let it get to where we had had it gotten. So to keep it up is continually, it's the same thing with maintenance, right? Is keep it up continually. That makes sense, seems to be working pretty well.
And they look beautiful. And you see, they just knocked your eye out.
Yeah, because we have the the dump truck, and you'll get $20,000 for that. That's a dumpster, yes, for the, just up to that fund. It's a $68,000 balance, so I'm pretty happy with that. If nobody has anything else with the 502 fund, we can move on to 600. Almost there.
Roundy third in hand from up.
Okay, revenue side of things.
Just a quick administrative point. It is the electric telecommunications fund, not the electric. All right, I'm not sure we get that changed on our.
Nine employees. The nine employees here. Seven on the electric side and seven on the telecommunications and generation side. I should say, seven, seven electric, two generators. These are all groupings.
Okay, nothing surprising in the revenue in charge of that first section there. Miscellaneous interest, you know, I've got $20,000 for interest, that's probably still.
That's way too high.
Yeah, we had $48,000 last year if we have.
I'll put, we just had $2 million CD and it was $100,000.
Right. Yeah.
That's for bigger interest than ours from that. Definitely negative interest this year. By the time you get to these and bold.
Amazing, amazing how things change. A fund that got us $100,000 in interest in in 2019, and now it's going to be nothing. So, yeah, that's that's definitely a wish, to get that much interest income.
Upper area of the Love Property.
That's right, that's right. The the miscellaneous income is $22,000. It was 231 last year, but last year we got $115,000 from ODOT after the Smiley-Gamble intersection. And we also received a significant amount of money from BWC. So that's why 2020 had such a large miscellaneous income line item. I don't expect anything like that at this point. So that gives us revenues of, well, our beginning balance of 5823 plus revenues is almost 17 million to play with.
Why is rent at, or 202, look at 202 for under miscellaneous? Why is that at 52,000?
Good question. See, 2019, it was 52,000. I can't remember off the top of my head what we gave.
No, no, that is the collection of the pole attachments. And we're still waiting on one of the pole attachments from last year to come in. So that's the way you see that we have to reduce.
So the 25,500 actual, we're still waiting on collections? So that collection will be received this year, correct? In addition to the 52,000?
Let me, let me get with you on that.
Because if they pay us, if they pay us what they owe us now, and then they also pay us at the end of the year.
Make up for interest.
No, there is issues with making contact through the pole attachment agreements. The contacts who we normally go through, there's some personal changes that affected us when we try to maneuver through a large corporation to find the person who you're, you need property bill.
Do we have any interest riders in those pole attachment agreements? Something to look at for the future, if we're not paid on time.
I can't say for sure.
Let's look. Because if there's a penalty for late payments, then we can ensure that that is enforced. There's one lesson, though, from the Sopranos.
Strike that comment.
Don't be late with our payments.
Okay, capital projects. John, do you have any?
Yeah, 600 capital, 500, $15,000 for engineering. We're looking at establishing engineering this year for the demolition of the smoke stack for next year. So we're going through the engineering process this year. We know it's going to be close to 250,000 or more to remove the smoke stack because you got the smoke stack and appreciating those routes in the plant. So this year is going to be the engineering, get the engineering ready to go for bid for next year. With that, I have a vision of making sure that the emergency generators that we have in town are able to operate during an event like Texas is going through right now. This is something I've been working, this has nothing to do with what's going on. I mean, this is this foresight from years ago. To make sure the Dozier units can all come up, synchronize one another, and have full generation capacity for what they can put out for the community. And not only do we have to isolate certain areas, so there could be a one way area which, you know, you're on, you're off, you're on, you're off. But that's the reason for we're going through some engineering. Now, we started this a couple of years ago with GPD to come in to establish a procedure for us for what unit will be the lead unit, and what other units can then after that follow this unit. So you bring one up, the next one has to synchronize this one, this one has to synchronize this, and you're all able to come up and run in units together.
What's your capacity right now to do that?
Uh, something around 750. So between all of the, the water plant would be part of that, but the water plant would be isolated to itself. We don't want to disturb that. The water treatment plant has excess capacity, that would be brought out to the system, as it was several years ago, do that outage again. That's that's some of the engineering aspects. And the other one would be, we're looking to have fiber ran to the generation station. That way we can have the visual on those units. Maintenance abilities of ground, 507, $25,000, as with, it seems like it's very popular right now, roof repair. Not that we're going to put a lot of money in in to the light lamp, but the flat roof there, the brick structure, the front section, it is the need of some repair. And there's still operating equipment, well, the switch gears under there, the communication's running there. We need to do some roof repair up there. Manufacturing capital, I have no notes beside that. Other than we have a little bit of a carryover, $12, $2,000 carryover equipment. And I'm going to, I'm going to rely on my history from this, that it's just based off of past practices. There's going to be a capital expenditure when it comes to the generators. So I do have, I do have any notes next to that, and I apologize for whatever reason I don't have that.
Well, unlike other years, we had a follow up, John, so if you want to do a little something there.
Speaking of which, so we have a feasibility study on the municipal broadband. The next step of that was going to be engineering, correct?
And you've got that, I've got notes on your thing that in the 500 fund, John, you included the fiber to progress drive, or, yeah, 600 engineering.
Right. Yeah, that's that, yeah, the fiber to progress drive, that'd be for the, being able to view the the generators there. Yeah, I was questioning myself about the $25,000 in equipment. You know, if you look at previous years, that $25,000 is significantly less. If you look at 80,000 in 2018, almost 50,000 in 2019, 67,000 last year, then I've reduced it quite a bit this year. And again, I apologize, I don't have the notes. If we scroll down a little bit farther than that, you get into the 600 CPO, that's Capital Projects Office. Line 530, 530, you can see that leaning on the electric, $55,000 for the building software. I'm leaning on that one. More so than the sewer or the water fence. More so than the sewer or the water bus. I'm not sure, Mr. Crum.
So engineering's the next step on that feasibility project? Do we have any money saved over for that?
Yeah, in, in the, the capital improvements, engineering, I've got a note.
Okay.
That, that includes.
I'm not sure, obviously, engineering's gonna be for that.
Okay.
I mean, we, we could, I could look and see if, if.
I thought there was an estimate in that report. I don't think it's gonna cost us nearly as much as was in the estimate.
It wasn't.
Yeah.
Have you seen the note so that in case we need to think that this twenty-five thousand equipment maybe roll it up to the engineering? Something we need to do there. I'll, I'll let you know, I'll, I'll let Mr. Crum know as well.
Cause the, the engineering piece is the next step for us before we can full. Cause the feasibility study gave us a, an estimate, monetary estimate. But the in, they, they even said the engineering study of how much it actually, the build-out, actual build-out cost would come from that to where we could then, as council, decide if we're green or red on it. So. I would like to put some engineering monies towards that because that's, gives us the, the real nuts and bolts. We have an estimate, but the real nuts and bolts of the.
Okay, I, I will, I will research that within the study, uh, do a question problem that and you take those adjustments, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, let's see, I guess we're down to the six hundred D C P, distribution capital projects now, aren't we? All right. This is probably a little more your speed than mine, John, do you want?
Yeah, I'll pick it up. Okay, uh, yeah, D C P, uh, distribution capital projects, five hundred, engineering, fifteen thousand dollars. Downtown, I'm not sure, Brian, did you put down any downtown project lighting?
Yeah, that was, I don't know where it came from, but, uh, I don't think it's a carryover from last year.
It is, it looks like it's a carryover.
Is it a carryover?
It's a carryover.
Oops, well, my apologies, guys, disregard that.
No, that's good. My engineering, uh, my notes with engineering, again, it pertains to the, um, engineering for capital improvements within the substations in case we need to have, here, GPD come in and make modifications to the substations.
I think I know why I left that note in there, is we have sixty-nine hundred, sixty-eight hundred dollars in covered. I think it was multi covered from last year.
Five oh seven, maintenance grounds, uh, seventeen thousand five hundred, there's work needs to be done, how would the, uh, out of the, uh, out of the yard for where we, uh, store the transformers. Uh, right now we're on stone, we wanna get those up off the stone, off the pallets, and get them onto a concrete pad for protection. Uh, once they sit on the stone, the moisture, the sun, so they kind of, it gets wet down there. We're gonna make sure these things are up and, and an area that's gonna drain properly, so. Uh, concrete pad for the transformers, uh, and there's additional roof work as well, uh, to put through that department, so.
Roof stuff.
Popper, thank you, sure.
City Hall?
Uh, yeah, city hall. Uh, coming down below that, you have five fifteen equipment, uh, you guys see the handline project. Uh, what that is about, Handline, RS Handline out here in industrial park, they control pretty much building seventeen out there. And if you were to combine all of those meters together, they are probably, if not the top, are very close to the top of our, uh, customer list. They're, they're right up there with Phillips and they're up there with M T D. So if you look at all of the, or all of the handline accounts out there, and they're all within, like, building seventeen, so they had a meter, a meter, a meter, and a meter. And what we wanna do with that, uh, is remove the individual meters, cause each meter comes with a customer charge. Each one comes with a standard charge. So to help them with their cost, instead of having all these different meters, like, M T D has one meter, Phillips is gonna have a one meter, Handline is sitting there with multiple meters in a row, we wanna remove those meters and install one primary meter for them. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a capital project that is, is kinda geared towards economic development, where we make sure Handline is, is, is metered as the other larger industrial customers will be having. Instead of having multiple meters, it'd just be one meter. So that's, that's the Handline project.
By the way, I, I, for those of you who have, like, the notes on the side, there was a note about drone on there as well. That was something that was, was a wish by the, the, the electric department that we decided wasn't necessary. I just failed to, to link that note.
Okay, and then, again, as you kind of scroll through the five fifteen, the five twenty-ones, you can sort of see it, the Handline project kind of rolled out through, through there. You got, you got equipment, and you're gonna have the meters and related supplies for this project, so that's the reason why you'd like to see all of the notes here.
Okay, so there's four or five meters. It's like building all this new stuff out, why can't you just re-figure things and charge instead of building all this new stuff? Sounds like a, a too simple question, I don't understand this.
Because the, each, each individual meter services one particular area of the, of the central industrial park.
Sure, I get, I get that, why, why can't you?
The building's just a lot of, cause you, cause you're gonna have to, one is gonna be the demand, you're not gonna be able to, you're not, you'd have to estimate the demand.
Yeah, so you can't just do the math and then just charge them?
Uh, cause we don't know, we don't know what that demand is, if you sort of lay the demand for one meter versus the other meter versus the other meter, you wouldn't be able to blend off where you're gonna get, get true demand. You gotta have one meter to show you what, what that demand is for that particular area, instead of four. I, I wouldn't know how to, to pop that for, it'd be inaccurate, it, it wouldn't be fair to that. That's, that's why. Uh, it's a great, great question, no, I wish it wasn't, somebody could see more money. Five thirty-one miscellaneous, uh, downtown infrastructure projects, if you're looking at, if you're looking at our east side, west side squares, the can lever arms, they have the controllers and the flashing, the signals and such on the traffic signals, those are in need of, of some, uh, touch-up pay on there. So we wanna paint those poles this year, if those, if those particular squares are gonna be, uh, beautified, we wanna make sure that the equipment that, that we control is, is up to par with the purification project out there. So we're gonna be painting the can lever poles, uh, traffic signals, the new controllers for both squares. Both squares are needed to one down, uh, we're having some issues with the one controller, some underground wired in a controller at the, at the west side square. East side square, uh, we wanna make sure that these are both the same, uh, uh, controllers for simplicity and be able to have remote control of these controllers, we can do all means for that to have. The one down here at the west side square's been hit numerous times, you can probably see it down there, it's in, it's in interesting condition. It works, but it's just been, the bells, they're helping protect them, but they've still been damaged. So that's, that's the seventy thousand dollars for traffic, uh, signals, would be east side, west side square. Uh, street lighting, uh, five fifty-three, there's multiple, uh, street lights such in, in the park area that has not been changed out yet. We're gonna be changing a lot of those over to the LED for the more efficient. Five seventy-two, system upgrade, seventy-five thousand dollars there. Uh, we have, uh, let's see, fourteen thousand five hundred dollar carryover, and this would be for relays. Uh, new wires and such go into some of the backlogs within, uh, Ward four, Ward one. Have some backlogs that hold in the backyards between back houses, there was some old work there we need to get done. As for that, uh, and some workout of technology, the underground work is taking place with technology. Line five eighty-two, SCADA system upgrade, uh, again, that software is kind of one of the, the, the plant is, is no longer supported. So we're looking to upgrade that software, uh, for the SCADA system, they're expensive, that's fifty thousand dollars. Line five eighty-eight, bucket truck, uh, that's, that's, that's a carryover.
Yeah, it's all covered.
Uh, but the bucket truck, they re-ordered last year, you ordered it, they make it this year, you get it last year, you get it this year, so.
We're really gonna get the truck this year?
We'll get the truck. We'll get it this year. Then another thing, uh, what we're doing here, you'll, you'll see, uh, line six fifty-four, six five four, uh, that's a new line item, it's George Hawk substation. And another reason why you see some of these numbers maybe a little higher than the, than previous, a lot of these, a lot of the expenditures in here, what we've did, what we've been doing in the past, the manufacturing, the C A P, uh, was his capital projects. So past history, you would have CAP, C A P, for the light plant, along with maintenance and manufacturing. Those three were for the light plant. The D C P and D I S is distribution. We don't already have a light plant that, and what we've been, we've been utilizing C A P to repair distribution product. Field work, substation work, and, and I, and I don't wanna do that anymore, so I moved all the money over to the D C P. So the D C P numbers would be higher than the CAP. So I, I want, I wanna keep the generation side completely separated when it comes to finances from the distribution side. That way, then here, when I start going through the numbers to calculate what money was spent on the generation such, I know specifically that the CAP and the manufacturing and the maintenance is geared towards the generation, and the D C P and the D I S is all, is all for the function of the distribution side. So that's the reason why you'll see some of these numbers inflated as well, I should've started out with that, just, just in mind. So that's the reason why I, I rolled those numbers up, cause a lot of this money last year would've been in, in the C A P, so. And, and, and the maintenance lines as well, you see those numbers. Uh, I hope that makes sense. We did, that's the reason for the George Hawk substation new, uh, George Hawk substation used to come out of the C A P, which is on the generation side, and it come out of the M T N, which is the maintenance for the generators, you know, so it needs to stay under the D C P. So that's the reason. Great.
No, that's, um, that's all I got for capital, for, or for D C P. Uh, that takes us down to six hundred distribution, um, wages. We, we might have some, some slight changes, um, with, with wages this year. John, you wanna talk about that?
Uh, I will, uh, I'll be careful.
Yeah, we, we, we don't know.
We have the ability right now to hire a, a lineman, a German lineman, who has a, a very high skill set with, within the electrical distribution system, high skill. Our, our billet is full, we, we have seven linemen. Uh, we were, we were looking to bring everybody up through force progression. So looking at lineman, we have seven, that was kind of our goal, we wanna keep the costs down. Uh, we, we eliminated positions, I should say, look at it, to reduce the force, to increase the wage for the top layer. So if you're a C lineman, no, no wage increase unless it's by contract, B is the same, but A, several years back, we increased that wage considerably to attract a German lineman. We currently have a German lineman who is very interested in coming to Shelby, and he's highly skilled, highly skilled. Uh, he lives fairly old in the Lucas area, and he would like to come and work for us, but we currently don't have an opening. So it's been discussing within administration of how do we work through this to be able to bring him on, on to our payroll? Cause he would fit very well in, into our, our scope of where we wanna be. We wanna have that A lineman standing across the board, that way with, when, for the outreach calls, you, you can make the phone call, you don't have to worry about the skill sets going on, you always know, it's just the ability to have a skill set that's able to do anything from round to business, hot. Uh, from, thank you.
Well, I don't wanna get cold, I'm right by the door.
My feet are a little, I don't know, I get hot.
Would you like my coat, man?
No, thank you, dear.
Cause I can't take anymore off over here, I can have clothes on you.
Eleven minutes. So we're, we're trying to figure out how to move forward if we wanna bring another lineman on to the payroll and, and work through the staffing roles that we have, uh, so we're not quite sure. We're kind of, I wouldn't say we're at odds or give a review, we're just trying to work through the, the financial aspect of, do we want to bring another lineman on, and, and we can put him into the payroll? Is your, your seventy-nine hundred thousand?
I'm sorry, I'm a hundred thousand without this.
Oh. Yes, sir.
Splice fiber.
I did not see it on his resume, but I'm sure he's great.
What's, what's it cost for, like, a, a entry level line?
Two years.
They're about, oh, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Look, kind of the idea is, and we got short on time, you know, it takes so many years to work up to a level and, and, uh, the part of the, kind of, the conversation was, do we maybe for a short term run something concurrently where we might be, it was our, basically, John, I said we wanna go with seven, and, but, you know, is there a way of, for a part of the year, we might have to run, and then something will happen, I think, will bring us back to that seven number. Uh, but this is a rare, rare opportunity. And, and again, this, this young gentleman, the circuit rider, he's. He's, he's the guy who's out and, and solve, another trainer would be highly valuable to bring those two, two younger men into the A status. So we would have, like, say, that A team, but, you know, for maybe a few months, we might be running a little heavy. Uh, that, that's kind of the basic discussion on that, that's. The bottom line of those.
Yeah, long story short, with appropriations wise, um, you know, we've, we've got a, a little bit of pad in, in the wage line in case we're, we're running double, double folks or whatever for, for a little bit. We, we do not have it in the wage just to add another person right now.
Where, where do we stand as far as retirement out there?
No, there were, you're, you're separating things out.
Well, I'm just thinking, you know, if you have somebody that's within a year or two of retirement, it just, it may be an opportunity there, you know?
And it adds, it does add value to the city. So if it adds value to the city, and it's not gonna increase those rates to the ratepayer, then I'm illustration aside.
Be a transfer from one department to the other, working through some, uh, uh, thought which is brought to the table at the time, we're kind of working through that. There could be, yeah, uh, uh, we, we report to the substations or anything that's actually pertaining to maintenance over the future.
We move the light. Too many major changes. I think we've got some transformers you want to switch out this year, John, is that true?
We changed transformers out of here, poles transformers, so we are, the, the transformer itself is a waste of our true plant that could be part of the ground fault issue that we're encountering out there, so we're gonna change it out. But that's part of the major expenditure out there.
Uh, I don't really have anything else in the distribution section, do you, John?
I think, I think it's pretty standard.
Uh, manufacturing, uh, more of the same with, with wages, nothing significantly changing there.
Purchase power, we're lowering. Purchase power, a little, a little bit.
Oh, that's, that's always nice.
We. Yeah, purchase power is, I put it at nine point five million dollars, uh, that should, that should come. How often you gotta run the unit, so we budgeted sixty thousand, last year we, we spent forty-seven thousand, uh, for a decent deal. About it. That's the only thing that sticks out, I think it's about the same. Again, the, the CAP, manufacturing, and maintenance, those are geared towards the manufacturing side. The DCP, the DIS is for, for all of the distribution, so. I separated it all, so I've used, kind of, uh, administ here, office, everything's pretty standard at the office, other than, oh, that's it. I don't think there are really things ever changed there. Something's sticking out. Other than, I, I'm gonna tell you that the line five seventy-six, five seventy-six, uh, electric dues, uh, we're gonna do in a, another study, uh, B E S S is battery storage, battery ener, energy storage, so I am reviewing that with an outside source to see how we can incorporate it into our system. That would be, that would be utilized, the batteries would be there, they would charge, then during those days, those peak times, you would discharge that into the system to reduce your transmission capacity charges, so. Uh, we're gonna do that, uh, any questions there? And so, six oh one? Real quick, uh, six oh one, light debt, customer fund, um, do you have anything on, on the top portion of there?
Not, not really, it's all sort of just based on last year. As are the refunds, really, we don't expect anything too, too crazy for, for refunds, so.
Uh, line five thirty-one, last, last page here, uh, line five three one, two hundred thousand dollars for miscellaneous, uh.
This is on the six oh two fund?
Yeah, six oh, six oh two, yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes, six, six oh two.
Light debt reserve fund, yeah.
Yes, uh, line five three one, you'll see there's two hundred thousand dollars in the miscellaneous, that is carryover from, uh, last year for the demolition of the ice plant and all those buildings. There, that committed at, uh, one hundred, one thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Yeah, one hundred, one thousand, eight hundred and fifty, there was a ten thousand dollar change order to that, uh, so the, the additional one that we're requesting here would be for the demolition of the three megawatt diesel generator and two of the turbine generators that were, that parted out inside the power plant, so we have a quote of forty-eight thousand dollars from a local contractor. Will come in, remove the three main diesel generator, and remove the, the turbine generator, number two and number four turbine generator, they'll take, they'll take them off the desk. So, for forty-eight thousand. Uh, we were, only able to get one quote, somebody local out of Crestline area, all the other contacts that we've made, we haven't called. We, we made a call over to Dover, cause they're trying to go through some stuff, and they put their contract to people out of Texas. There's no reason for anybody to make a Texas, we're against making Crestlines. So. So, yeah, it'd be the, the cost, that two hundred thousand will cover the, the expenditure we have for removal of those buildings. Uh, they are ice plant, chimed, such, and it'd also cover the cost, and we have a quote of forty-eight thousand dollars to remove the diesel engine, the diesel generator engine that's in a diesel building. And two turbine generators inside the power plant, get a, get a, get them out. So that's just part of the plan to help keep the, the facility healthy.
It's been interesting, I know Charlie has been running, following on Facebook, the people who are the experts on, on everything that's happening up there at the light plant. Oh, they're gonna tear down the mama's building, uh, we've made notes, just, oh, it's gonna be a parking lot. No, we're gonna, you know, but everyone's an expert on Facebook, right?
All right, anything else?
Some move.
Is that, okay, we have a motion in a second to adjourn.
No.
Yay.
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 They're adjourned at three o'clock.